Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the meeting of the Select Board for April 24, 2024. A regular meeting on Tuesday was delayed until this Wednesday because of Passover. So let's start off with any comments or updates from the Select Board. Mike or Paul?
Yeah, I do have a quick one, Bernard. Thank you. I just wanted to mention that we are embarking on an update to our comprehensive plan, first time in nearly 20 years. And the Board has made a call for committee members, Steering Group Committee that will be appointed by the Select Board. There will be 12 members of that Board, and that Committee will guide the consultants and staff as we go through a two-year process of developing and the update to our comprehensive plan. So if you are interested in applying for one of those seats, membership to that Committee, you can go to the town website under Boards and Commissions. It's called the Comprehensive Plan Steering Group. And Chaz, we're going to add a news item to the homepage that people could go there as well to find easy access to that page as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you have anything? No? Okay. Let's move on. Public comment. Charlie, please set out the rules and we'll start.
Thanks, Bernard. Keep joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once 15 minutes has been met, there is an opportunity at the conclusion of the Select Board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to Board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. First person signed up for public comment is Fiza Khan.
We have an issue on audio.
Okay.
Folks are saying they can't hear the audio.
On it.
No problem here.
Oh, yeah.
It might be on the cable feed on YouTube.
Ah, okay.
Is it just the cable feed or is it folks who are in the Zoom? Okay. Okay.
I can hear you folks.
Could you confirm in the chat anybody that's not on a panel if they can hear the meeting?
Right now, only panelists can use the chat, but if you could, if you're having issues, please put something in the Q and A if you are having some issues. Melissa is an attendee and is saying she is able to hear.
Yeah, and we can hear you in the room.
All right, so if it's an issue of folks watching on television, we just ask folks to join. Okay. Here we go.
All right, should I get started?
Yep.
All right, the first person signed up for public comment is Fiza Khan. Fiza, if you're in the room, please approach the presentation station, and your three minutes will begin. I'm not able to hear anything at the presentation station, if that's...
No one's talking. Yeah, we're getting it set up here.
All right, just making sure, sorry.
Yep, no worries. Thank you.
I wasn't even aware that there was a Brookline, a Brookhouse meeting. When I did ask somebody that I know that lives in the Brookhouse...
Is this, is this...
Bernard Green, he said that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He said, there was...
That's all, Eric. So that will be, that video will come up during either Sana or Samuel.
Okay, I thought there was only one public comment. I apologize.
No, that's okay, Eric. Thank you for jumping in. I appreciate it. So Fiza, yeah, please approach the presentation station when you'd like to begin your time.
I'm here. Thank you. So Fiza Khan, a resident of Precinct 13. I'm here today to bring your attention to the difference in approach. I noticed when the Select Board Chair, Mr. Green, issued his statement earlier this month regarding the anti-Semitic graffiti found on a sign at an M B T A stop. Anti-Semitism is unacceptable and must be denounced wholeheartedly, just as all other forms of hate. The statement was spot-on, unambiguous, and sent a strong message, as it should have. While the statement was commendable, to say the least, I noticed that it was a perfect example of two sets of rules in effect for the residents in the town of Brookline. There were no such anti-hate statements, or any statement, to say the least, issued by the Select Board or a representative thereof, when anti-Palestinian graffiti containing an expressive was found in two different places in Brookline in December 2023, one on Gardner Path and one on a sidewalk or sidewall. I have attached and submitted the images for your reference. Despite our reaching out to you and the town in that regard and others sadly, Muslims and Arab Americans in Brookline continue to notice the difference you exhibit in your attitude that shows through your statements or lack thereof. A perfect example of this differential attitude is the Select Board members' issued statement supporting Israel after October 7th and condemning the violence. Now that the death toll is over 35,000 for the Palestinians, over 15,000 are children, we have yet to see a statement that supports Palestinians or Palestine or condemn the violence there from any of the members. As we look at the loss of human life each side has endured, you must ask yourself if you are treating one community different from the other. Why has no one here issued a statement denouncing what's going on? You were quick to issue a statement about a foreign country then, but bringing a ceasefire resolution in Brookline regarding the same country is divisive. Why? Could it be that you kicked off the divisiveness, but by urgently issuing your statements of standing in solidarity with one entity, one country that could be on the wrong side of history? Being a town leader comes with a great deal of responsibility. You provide a model to your residents of how you want us to act. You know and we know that hate is hate, no matter which group is on the receiving end of it. When you pick sides, what message are you sending? What happens when we choose to highlight denouncing one form of hate and not another? What message are we sending to our residents? It's your decision and discretion to issue statements, but please know that the Select Board's lopsided approach is not going unnoticed and is contributing to the so-called divisiveness in the community. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Danell O'Neill. Danell, I'm promoting you now. Danell, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute your video, and your three minutes will begin.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. Danell O'Neill, Senior, Town Meeting for Precinct 4, Mossland Advisory Committee, speaking as a representative of Brookline, born and raised, was a little disappointed. Two things. I'll be brief. First thing is the Juneteenth celebration. I feel there's still going to be a division. Number one, the way that the town set it up was the application process. And that was a good idea, you know, the application process. When the application says, will all the organizers work with any other organizers who want to be involved? You're supposed to check yes or no. Fortunately, everybody checked yes, but the noes but aren't actually working with us. So that's one thing. The second, the second thing is, we march away from that location for a reason over the last three years, and that's going to continue. We have the celebration over here on Brookline Ave with Juneteenth for a number of reasons. First, first responders going to work. They can stop by and get something free to eat. And like I said, we're walking away from that property in Cooley's Corner. A lot of people that I've spoken to, including my junior, my son, will not be celebrating over there. The ratio of the monies spent divided is a crazy number. It's something like 85 to 15 split up. So that means, well, you already know what those numbers means. I would like the Select Board not to vote on that until we get one more opportunity to have a full discussion about this, everybody involved. Last thing, Marissa Vogt sent an email out early on the Town Meeting listserv in regards to Ward Article 17. That Ward Article had to do with equity in the cannabis industry. Chaz is aware of this. He allowed, he gave permission to Marissa to send it out. There's a test case that's happening. So my question is, there's a change of ownership.
There are 30 seconds.
Thank you, Charlie. Who, and Chaz, if you may, answer please. Who's changing ownership? Sanctuary, I mean, who's, who's changing ownership? Because now the Select Board's, you know, policy could really take an effect. Thank you.
Okay. As if you'd like a second?
I can follow up. I can follow up offline. We're not, we're not ready to have that conversation, but the change of ownership is a matter of public record. NADA is changing ownership. They've already been approved by the state.
Okay, the next person signed up for public comment is Sean O'Neill. I understand that either Sam Pierce or Sana Hafiz is perhaps going to read a statement that will lead into the video that we started earlier.
Yes, I'll read on behalf of Sean.
So please go ahead and read your short intro, and then we will, we'll have Eric in the room start the video for everyone.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Sean O'Neill, and I'm running for Brookline Housing Commissioner. At the South Brookline Candidates Forum, Select Board Candidate and current Select Board Chair, Bernard Green mentioned me in my struggles to get around town during a question about equity and walkways. What's interesting is that a few weeks ago, I was, I was made aware of a Brookhouse candidate forum that was occurring, one that I was not invited to despite the other candidates being there. I called Bernard, who made excuses and said that it may be because of a space issue, despite the fact that other candidates were given an accessible option, a Zoom link. I don't need governance that says my name in my real struggles in rooms that they don't even help me get into. My community needs governance that values lived experience and fights for it to be heard. I thank my friend and neighbor for helping me record the following video. Vote change, May 7th.
Thanks. Okay, Eric, if you are there, would you start the video that we queued up earlier? And that will take up Sean O'Neill's public comment.
Wasn't even aware that there was a Brookline, a Brookhouse meeting. When I did ask somebody that I know that lives in the Brookhouse, Bernard Green, he said that. At first, he said, there was, there was a space problem in the room, or there may be one. I wanted to just touch base so that everybody knows how it felt not to be invited. It feels horrible because we, we are handicapped or not, we are all supposed to vote. And I don't know why I have to vote for somewhere that I can't get to or was not invited to. He apologized, but I don't think there should have been an apology. I think that I should have been able to be invited to the meeting because I always vote, I always say what my opinion is. So it's not like people don't know that, but again, they're leaving me out of something very important. I've lived here close to 30-plus years, and I have a relative problem of accessibility in our streets and homes. So my, my idea is to try to make it a little more accessible for other people and people aging in place. Nobody considers the aging in place, but you have to when you talk about Brookline. One of my goals is to help those who need to age in place and have, have specific handicaps so that they don't have the difficulty that I have. The wheelchair company even told me, don't ride on the sidewalks because it tears up the undercarriage of my chair. So I'm forced to do the bike lane. At the point where riding in the street is a little bit safer than riding on our own sidewalks. Someone has to do something about this. If not now, when? Because you can't, you don't know the difficulty unless you yourself are the one...
Okay, the next person signed up for public comment is Sam Pierce. Sam is being promoted to a panelist now. Sam, you've been promoted to a panelist. You may unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you very much. I'm actually on the train, but I just wanted to tell everyone hello. My name is Samuel Pierce. I wanted to highlight something communities have been putting together with all the division, all the fear and all the worries. Our community is coming together to stand in support of an immediate ceasefire with the March Saturday, May 4th at 11:00 a.m. March, peace march, from starting right next to Brookline High School at Cypress Park. And we will be marching to Town Hall as one community of all races, religions, backgrounds, with our common values of human life and peace. There will be faith leaders, community leaders, and more will deliver remarks that remind us all of our shared community. And as someone who grew up in Brookline, I can tell you that ignoring our problems doesn't solve anything. It never has. As someone who now lives in Boston, I can assure you that your neighbors support you. Your cousins in Boston are with you and will be there to support our community. And I was hoping that everyone on the call will be able to join together, like so many across the country, on Saturday, May 4th. This effort from everyday residents, regular people of all different backgrounds is a testament to how we have much more in common than not. And if you would like to be part of organizing this event, please reach out to BrooklineCeasefireMarch@gmail.com. And you can scan the QR code on the screen to get the link to less than two weeks away from the March. And so it's important that we get the word out to as many people as possible. Thank you all for providing time for me to speak, and let's come together.
Okay, great. The next person signed up for public comment was Sana Hafiz. Sana, you may approach the presentation station, and your three minutes will begin.
Hello, my name is Sana Hafiz. I live in Precinct 4, and I wanted to emphasize exactly what this Brookline Ceasefire March means for our community. Everyday residents of all different faiths and backgrounds coming together to create flyers, make event links, pass out QR codes, reach out to our leaders and community stakeholders, file the paperwork, collect the 10 to 15 signatures of residents, submit the March location, the route, working with town departments like the Police Department and DPW, all to ensure a safe event for all. This isn't any one organization or affinity group. This is what community and shared values looks like. From our cousins in Boston and neighboring regions to the faith leaders from multiple religions that are coming out to support, we too can show that our community values human life. We can demonstrate that despite all the back and forth we've seen at various town meetings, that we are willing to have these difficult conversations. Everyday residents are willing to build bridges and find our common humanity. We, the people, want unity and we want change despite elected officials like Town Moderator that is once again trying to stifle community voices by saying the event flyer cannot be shared. We know that neither Gazans nor the hostages nor anyone else is safe with this indiscriminate bombing. We know that the first step is lasting peace. The first step to lasting peace is a ceasefire. Let's build common ground on May 4th at 11:00 a.m. at Cypress Field right next to Brookline High School as we march to Town Hall. And if you have any interest at all in helping our team of everyday folks organize this event, please reach out to the email that's listed there. Please scan the QR code and please spread the word. As a final note, this division is absolutely fueled by governance from the community that has started, you know, Juneteenth in this town being robbed of the celebration to the discrimination against the Muslim community, you know, to the issues with accessibility that we're seeing. Multiple people, multiple different communities have concerns that are not being heard. If you have concerns like those that have been voiced today, please join my weekly Zoom from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. every Wednesday on my campaign site, thepeopleforbrookline.com. I think that we need change, and I think the first step of that is ensuring that the voices with the lived experiences that deal with these issues every day have a chance and a platform to speak. Thank you.
Okay, Bernard, I believe that concludes the 15 minutes that we have at the start of the meeting. If there are any other folks who would like to speak, they could raise their hand or put their name in the Q and A. We will get to that at the end, the conclusion of the Select Board's business. So I turn it back over to you, Chair Green.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, miscellaneous items. First approval of meeting minutes for April 9 and April 16, 2024. Any edits or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, I move approval of the minutes for April 9 and April 16. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, we have items 3B through 3H, which are miscellaneous items, plus items 3I through 3V, which are licenses and grants of location that were heard at a hearing on April 17 here at Town Hall. Mike Sandman was representing the Board, and I was also in attendance. And the recommendation from that hearing was approval of all of those items. So I move approval of items 3B through 3V. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, I see our DPW Commissioner, Erin Schut, is at the microphone. And we're going to start with the departmental budget review for Public Works and the Water and Sewer Division. Before we start, let me... So we asked departments to structure their presentation in a certain way, to maximize the benefit that we get from them and help us identify areas where we can express our concerns on the record to the advisory committee, who will ultimately present the town's budget to Town Meeting. And of course, then we'll express our concerns to Town Meeting. We asked for them to address the following issues, following four issues. One, their biggest accomplishment of the previous year, their goals for the upcoming year, any new initiatives within their current budgets. And finally, any initiatives that they would pursue if there were no constraints by, no budgetary constraints that they were living under. We also asked them how they would measure success of their accomplishments in fiscal year 24, how they measured past, success of their accomplishments in fiscal year 24, and how they plan to measure success for fiscal year 2025. Just wanted to give people a sense of, you know, what we're asking departments to present to us. And we'll hear from Commissioner of Department of Public Welfare, or Public Works, Erin Schut. I'll get it out right.
See, I just want to make sure this is, I think, full screen and we are good. So, good evening. My name is Erin Schut. I'm the Commissioner of Public Works. And for those of you who may not be familiar with the broad range of services we provide, I encourage you to take a look at the FY25 Budget Book on the town's website. It details, all of, really goes into detail on all of our division functions. But in summary, our job is to enhance the quality of life in Brookline as responsible stewards of the town's physical assets, infrastructure, natural resources. We design, build, manage, maintain, protect, and improve the town's utilities. That's water, sewer, stormwater, infrastructure, and public spaces, public right-of-way, parks, public grounds, school grounds, and civic space. We provide reliable, cost-effective, high-quality service that protects public health, maintains customer confidence, and supports a prosperous economy. So I'm here this evening with our outstanding leadership team to discuss the FY25 budget. And because we have many watching at home, I thought I would do a quick introduction. Looks as though this isn't forwarding. It's being shared.
You may have to just drag that, drag it down, like, you know, scroll the mouse down or...
There we go.
Use page down. Yeah, that works. Page down might be what you...
Okay, so we have Kevin Johnson, who is our Deputy Commissioner of Operations and Director of Highway Sanitation and Fleet Services, Alexandra Vecchio, Director of Parks and Open Space, Jay Hershey is our Director of Water and Sewer, Amy Ingles is our Transportation Administrator, and Dan Murphy is our very new Director of Engineering and Transportation, is on his fifth day, I think. So we are thrilled to welcome Dan. So as Select Board Chair Green mentioned, they provided us a list of questions that primarily focus on goals and objectives. So we're not going to spend much time on budget numbers. We've spent a lot of time with advisory. There's a lot of detail in the budget book. But at a high level, we have a budget of $52.246 million. $33.4 million is with the Water and Sewer Enterprise, and I'll just point out that 69% of that, or $23 million, is our assessment to the MWRA. And then $18.8 million is the balance of our budget for the rest of Public Works. We have 175 personnel, and in the budget book, we have a total of 73 accomplishments and 60 goals for FY25. I have selected just a few to share with you this evening. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how we set our goals, which was one of your questions. And, and then I've actually pulled out five to share with you some metrics, because that's one of the things you asked about was metrics and benchmarks. So the Department of Public Works has a 10-year strategic plan. It's a 22 to 32 plan. We have 20 overarching objectives and then 60 goals. And what we do is we use this to establish our goals each year. And this is in concert with doing input from the public, boards and commissions, the Select Board's goals, conditions, analyses. And we use that to develop, to develop our goals with our guiding principles from the strategic plan. Our guiding principles, we have five. It's provide a clean, green, safe, accessible, inclusive, sustainable, and welcoming network of public spaces, assets, utilities, and infrastructure. We want to be the service provider of choice. This is design, construction, maintenance, and management. We have incredible staff within the Department of Public Works. Create a culture of opportunity, continuous improvement, and excellence to deliver exceptional public projects and services. Demonstrate inclusion, equity, and engagement values in our management of public assets, services, and employment practices. And to incorporate climate mitigation and adaptation goals into the development of capital improvement projects and daily Public Works operations. So I'm just sharing with you that we have the strategic plan. We look at lifecycle assessment. We work with the community. And then we develop our annual goals and objectives. And then we reference the strategic plan in those goals and objectives. So if you look in the budget book, you'll see that we have these items, you know... So if you look in the budget book, you'll see that we have these items, you know, a list of these items, and then in parentheses, we give the objective within the strategic plan. So we're really trying to come back to our strategic plan and make sure that we are on course and that we're staying within those guiding principles. So just to give you a high level of some of our FY24 accomplishments, we will complete construction of the replacement of the synthetic turf at Skyline Park. That's done. Murphy Playground will be complete, Robinson and the Lars Anderson Access Road. We have developed a collaborative waste management services bid with Newton. This is Newton and Brookline to evaluate costs, efficiencies, and options to most efficiently, effectively, responsibly manage all waste streams. The Department of Environmental Protection is really excited about this collaborative approach. Our recycling bid is, will be up. And so we're really looking to implement this for FY26. But this is going to give us great cost analysis to look at what is most beneficial for the community going forward. And we're really leveraging the buying power of our two communities. We've commenced a stormwater model of the town's drainage system to determine capacity and constraints and look at future improvements to increase our resilience and prepare for future flooding associated with climate change. This couldn't come at a better time, honestly. With the year that we've had, the amount of rain, it is really top on everyone's mind. We're doing a townwide model that will then roll into a stormwater management and master plan and priorities that we will set with capital improvements so that we can really prepare for these events and improve our system's capacity going forward. We planned and implemented Brookline's first Milwaukee Forest, which had tremendous community involvement. We constructed bike and pedestrian safety improvements on Beverly Road as part of the town's traffic calming and safe routes to school. We supported the town's rodent control action plan, updated the regulations. We have hired a code enforcement services manager within the last month. And we've added an additional 22 big-belly trash and recycling receptacles for parks and public grounds. And we've also incorporated an item into our CIP, where we will annually be replacing all of the open-top containers now with the fully enclosed rodent control big-belly trash receptacles. And we celebrated the restoration and reopening of the Carlton Street Footbridge, which I will mention again a little bit later. In terms of objectives for FY25, we are looking to complete a a pay and classification study for all of Department of Public Works functions. We received a Mass Compact grant to do this, and so this is underway. We are currently finneling out all of the questionnaires, and we're working with Gov HR consultant to do this. There'll be a community survey as well, looking at other communities. But it's very important that we are competitive in the marketplace, that we look at retaining our employees, and that we have, that we're a desirable community for other individuals to come and want to work with us. We'll commence the construction of the renovation of Schick Park, the Skyline Park Trails and Playground, and also the Amory Tennis Courts. That's a project that includes the clay courts, the parking lot, the comfort station, and replacement of the Halls Pond Boardwalk. We're going to work with all the town departments to create a new policy and plan regarding the acquisition and procurement of electric vehicles and funding installation of charging infrastructure. I know that EVs was one of the board's goals and that you've talked about during the retreat, and I have some metrics to share on that. We're going to implement a comprehensive water meter replacement program. We're looking, we've started a Vision Zero Plan and Policy with a committee. And so over the course of this year, we will develop that plan that is being chaired by Select Board Member Michael Sandman. This year, we will commence a public design review process to advance the Beacon Street Bridle Path Project. And we were reaccredited this year, which was thrilling. This is, we are reaccredited every four years. We revisit all of our policies and practices. And one of our goals starting this year is to revisit a quarter of our policies and practices each year so that we really have time to think deeply about them and are they best in practice? And so what policies, what practices do we want to update to best serve the community? So a little bit on the metrics. So this is a slide looking at EV. This is something that I'm really proud of in terms of how far we've come with both charging stations and with our electric vehicles. So in fiscal year 24, and unfortunately, you can't hear, you can't see like the full bar chart, but in fiscal year 24, we installed 63 new charging ports. In 23, we had 40. And so we currently have now over 100. And we have, I think it's 14 maybe planned for FY... Oh, thank you. See, on mine as well. FY14. So we've spent, we've had $1.4 million in construction and station funding that was received through the EverSource Make Ready Program, where we've had those incentives. And then we had around $240,000 that we used through ARPA and TNC money. So we've spent over $1.6 million in all of this EV readiness with funding sources outside of the town budget. We have, we have matrix. We're looking at how many megawatt hours we're using per month and really what that means in terms of CO2 emissions. And what we can say now is that with the chargers that we've installed to date and the energy that has been used, it's equivalent to planting 6,500 trees over a 10-year period. Within DPW, we've purchased seven light-duty vehicles with EVs, and they replaced combustion vehicles that we have. That equates to three tons of CO2 per year. And we are the first community in New England that will be introducing an all-EV trash truck. And we did receive a grant in order to acquire this truck, and we will be rolling it out shortly. So we will be continuing these efforts. I mentioned we're going to work on a policy because going forward, we need to make sure that the acquisition of vehicles lines up with the availability of charging facilities. We're working with all the town departments to make sure that they have what they need and that we're moving forward with a plan. Environmental health and safety, this was one of my primary goals coming in, was to ensure that the Department of Public Works was compliant and that we were, had the plans, protocols, training, practices in place to keep our employees safe and also the public. So since in 2022, we had about six policies and practices in place. We now have over 38. And we have instituted a whole host of training across our full staff. It's OSHA training. It's OSHA supervisor training. We have a safety orientation program for employees. We have a winter operations safety training that we've implemented and a lot of function-specific training that we require in many cases for employees that are doing safety-sensitive functions. And in terms of lost workdays, and when we started this, we have gone from over 800 lost workdays per year to now around 350, directly attributed to the policies and the practices that we have put in place. Carlton Street Footbridge, this is really just an example of a project that can take many, many years and a lot of people and a lot of community involvement to accomplish. Well over 20 years to achieve this project. When we think about metrics and even standard Massachusetts tip projects, you look at your, you know, design documents, and you have a goal for 25% and 75% and 100% complete. And then construction. This also had the goal of, it was a requirement in the Muddy River Restoration Project Permit, and funding for that project was tied into successfully completing this project. So we've accomplished all of that. And in this past several months, the project has received an award from the American Council of Environment, of Engineering Companies, so an Engineering Excellence Award at the civil level. Paul and Nikki Songas Award from the Preservation Massachusetts. That's for Bill Smith, the project manager, and it's for the full Carlton Street Footbridge. The Brookline Green Space Alliance is honoring Bill Smith as an outstanding public servant and his achievements. And then just this past week, we were notified that it has been selected in the category of Historic Restoration and Preservation as Project of the Year with the American Public Works Association. So just in terms of benchmarks, in terms of recognition, that's not just local, but across the country, and many, many projects submit for the American Public Works. But I think perhaps the, you know, the standard we should all achieve is to try to have the project in your face on a mug, which there is for the Carlton Street Footbridge. So we're really proud of that project and know that it already is a significant pathway and gateway that's really helping connect Cambridge and Boston to the Medical District and into the Emerald Necklace. So roadway network and asset management. Last week, I came and talked to the Select Board about our Transportation and Mobility Plan, about our pavement condition index. I know that deferred maintenance, management of our infrastructure is very important to the Select Board. It's also very important to us. So one thing that we're going to be looking very closely at in the coming months is the whole, all of the assets. So sidewalks, pavement condition, and the different, you know, the pedestrian advisory committee, complete streets, multimodal accommodations, all of the various interest groups and looking at the programs and the condition, the process, and our funding. Moving that into kind of looking at road safety specifically in our pavement condition index. So that data, what is the condition of the roads overlapped with complete streets and those goals and all of these other desires that we have for safety and accessibility as a community? And then coming up with a clear, balanced, transparent, data-driven process where we can maximize asset in our asset management and also continue to pursue our complete street goals. So just saying that I heard you in the Select Board meeting, and we're really trying to think about how we move this forward and then creating a dashboard ultimately on our website, which will be really clear to everybody what we're doing, what it costs, and how we're doing that. Tree Preservation Bylaw, this was approved by the Select Board in November. Just as a quick reminder, residents cannot remove a protected tree without a protected tree impact and removal permit during construction. We reviewed 34 permits. 12 didn't trigger the bylaw. We've had six permits issued. Those, you know, the balance there, there are some that are still under review or requesting additional information. And 36 new trees have been planted. So we'll be evaluating this as we go into fiscal year 25. We'll have a full year to really see how many, how many permit requests are we getting? What's the time to process? And what's the impact that we're having? Are we able to save trees? Are we just, is the benefit that we're actually making sure that we're replacing trees? And so we'll have, we'll be able to provide some data on that in the future. And then this last piece is the New Sustainability and Natural Resources Division. And this came up several times in the Select Board's goals and objectives. And also, as part of your retreat, the Department of Public Works will now house a new Sustainability and Natural Resources Division. We'll have a Sustainability and Natural Resources Director. And the thought in this division is that it'll have an Assistant Director of Sustainability and also a Sustainability Program Manager, who will be responsible for community outreach, grants, programming. We'll be incorporating the existing Conservation Administrator role. Will be part of this team. And then there's a dotted line to Buildings, the Assistant Director of Public Buildings, to really pull in the fossil fuel-free and net-zero goals. And then the Tree Warden, Urban Forestry Manager will also have a dotted line as we continue to implement the Urban Forest Climate Resiliency Master Plan. In terms of the roadmap, we're looking at hiring the director, creating a short-term list of goals and objectives and an outreach plan, identifying goals, action items with the stakeholders, and creating an internal management team that will include involvement with the Select Board. We'll hire staff, look at updating or creating a new climate action plan, identifying grant opportunities in there. Once we have staff in place, there are some great opportunities for the town to leverage in terms of grants. And then set benchmarks and report annually on progress. So I would just say, in conclusion, the sort of guiding long-term goals and objectives for me as Commissioner is communication and customer service, staffing retention and capacity building, asset management and maintenance, environmental health and safety, digital transformation, which I think is what our community wants. How are we getting our information out to the community? How are they able to engage with us? And how are we able to do our work most efficiently? And then climate resiliency and environmental sustainability. If, I mean, one of the questions you had asked was around if we had, you know, sort of unlimited funding. I think that was actually the question, if there's something along those lines.
Really realistic.
I know. I think for us, it's really looking at the capital funding and deferred maintenance. So thinking about the roads and the sidewalks, the fleet, and also looking at our stormwater and green infrastructure on the capital side. Maintenance, I think that's really across the board, all the assets that we manage. We want to make sure that they're not falling into disrepair. And then I just want to emphasize, I think, the importance of pay and classification and that we are in a place where we are supporting retention, hiring, and employee morale. So with that, if you have some other questions, either related to your own goals and objectives, I have the full team here. Maybe I'll just stop and see if there's anything that you might have.
Okay, any questions from the Select Board? Is Mike still here?
Yes. Yes, and I, thank you, Bernard. I need to, I should explain that I need to leave in about two minutes to host a meeting of the Chestnut Hill Commercial Study Area Workshop. But I wanted to say thank you, Aaron. That was vintage. Aaron Schut covered all the bases beautifully. And I really appreciate the high points that you, you talked about the Carlton Street Bridge and transportation issues and so forth. That was very, very helpful. Thank you.
Mike, could you possibly stick around for the next item, which should be brief? The tree easement, otherwise we lose a quorum. We can't have a vote on that.
I will adjourn this session with DPW and move to that.
And move to that and come back? Yes. Okay, can we do that real quick then? Bye. Apologies to DPW teams.
Hey there.
Can we promote Jonathan Simpson and Jennifer Gilbert?
Okay, so Newberry Site Tree Easement. Who we have?
Have First Assistant Town Council Jonathan Simpson.
Is he here?
Broughting him now. Jennifer Deposit Gilbert is a guest. Charlie, she's in the attendees list.
There he is, Jonathan.
Hello, everyone.
Okay, tell us about this easement so that we can vote on it.
Certainly. I will be brief because I know Mike needs to go. Back in when we approved the special district zoning for the former Newberry College property, among the Town Meeting votes taken was the, one of the things we negotiated was a plan to protect six old-growth trees along Fisher Avenue. And that was memorial, the plan was to memorialize that at a certain stage of construction by way of an easement agreement. Town Meeting approved the acquisition of that interest in real estate at that same Town Meeting. So that, that aspect of the process has already been taken care of. But the understanding was always that the tree easement wouldn't need to be executed until they were a certain, at a certain stage in the, in the construction process, which they have now reached. So Tom Brady and I and Jennifer Gilbert, who's also on the call, have worked together to draft the easement agreement that's before you. It is, essentially, the agreement is that the owners of the property will, will be responsible for maintaining the trees pursuant to requirements listed in the easement agreement that Tom Brady has reviewed. But it will also, this is where the critically, it is an interest in real estate comes from. The town, if they fail to perform under their obligations, the town has the authority to go in and do it, do it for them, so as to maintain these trees. In addition, there's, it includes the understanding that if one of the trees... In addition, there's a, it includes the understanding that if one of the trees is diseased or damaged and needs to be taken down, that they'll be responsible for, for replacing it. So it is, it's a way to, one of the, the sort of long tail of some of these big special districts that we, that we put together. But I'm happy to report that it, this is, this is things working as intended. And this is another box we can check along the way to, to finishing up that whole special district we worked on together in 2020.
Okay.
In addition, the vote will include the ability for delegating the, the ability to CHAZ to sign on your behalf. So you don't have to worry about all showing up anywhere with.
Right, good. Okay. Any questions? Mike, do you have any questions? No? Paul?
No.
I don't either. Okay, I move approval of the question of proving and executing an easement between 123 Fisher Avenue Owner LLC and the town of Brookline for a 6,920 square foot easement on Fisher Avenue provided for protection and maintenance of six trees and to delegate to the town administrator the ability to execute on the town's behalf. Execute the agreement, the easement on the town's behalf. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. Mike Sammon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll see you at 7:30. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's shoot.
She'll come back.
Be back.
I had a few thoughts Bernard, if it's okay.
Pardon me?
I have a few thoughts and questions.
Okay, yeah, why don't you start off?
First, thank you for the presentation. I will say when I joined the select board, for whatever reason, that the, the organization that I came most in contact with was yours. And at first I want to say it's a pleasure working with you and your team. You guys are professional, responsive and collaborative, and it's a good thing. You have one of the most visible positions in the town. Not specifically yourself, but all the work that you need to do, it touches just about every resident in Brookline. And, and visitor as well, as well as employees. And I think it is, it's a critical role and while everything isn't always perfect, you guys are working very hard and I appreciate it. I just wanted to say that you're doing a great job. I did have a couple of questions. Rats, 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 you know, we always are talking about rats. I'm pleased to hear that we've either hired or moving to hire the code enforcement individual. As you know, one of the, the challenges that we have is, is enforcement with our commercial entities. There's a tension, right? We don't want to overburden them with a lot of regulation and costs, but yet they do, are often a source of much of the food that, that the rats need in order to sustain themselves. Can you talk a little, just a little bit about code enforcement and how you anticipate going about it and moving the needle? And will we have a rat metric? I know that, I'm sure you have metrics, but how do we measure it?
So, thank you. I'll say that the, the road and control action plan is something that the Department of Public Works and Public Health and Human Services work very closely together on. So our Director of Health and Human Services, Segal Reese, really takes a leadership role in the entire program. But we, we work hand in hand and we're, we're both out there enforcing. So as it relates to the action plan, as you know, last year we implemented new regulations. And what we've been focusing on and will focus on this year is going to be the enforcement. So as I said, we have someone that just came on board. We're actually sort of onboarding them now in terms of the inspections and the enforcement protocols. So what we see is far more outreach and touchpoints with the businesses, with the areas where we have repeated problems, greater communication with the neighborhood, greater communication with those business entities and with our internal team. We do a lot of collaboration with building, with health, with public works in terms of making sure that we're sharing all of the information. So we will have, the metrics that we have are really on enforcement. And that is already going up, just in terms of the communication, the warnings. We generally try to do that first. We need to teach people what they need to do. It's for us in public, public works is generally improperly stored trash. And if they can store their trash properly, that's really dealing with a huge portion of the, the food source problem. But also the work that we do in the public areas to keep our roads clean and our commercial areas clean is equally important. And so we've been talking about sort of doubling down on that effort in our. We do have some metrics. I don't have that for you this evening, but Segal and I have been talking about that. It's, it's modern pests and the numbers that we have from them. It's the work that we're doing ourselves and, and also the complaints, number of complaints and location of the complaints that we see on Brook Online.
Great. Yeah, and I think the proactive enforcement as opposed to waiting for inbound is also important. And you're right, education is probably the number one thing that we can do to help people understand in neighborhoods, neighborhood associations, and even business districts. I'm surprised at the number of people that just don't understand that, you know, having a dumpster that doesn't close properly or overflows because they're not picking it up frankly enough, the number of rats that that can really generate in a very short period of time.
So we, I'm glad you mentioned that actually. We did create some, promote some educational materials with the Health and Human Resources Department specifically around dumpsters and, you know, sort of proper, proper maintenance of the dumpsters. And we delivered that to all of the commercial and multi-resident buildings in town.
Yep, I had two, two other quick points, questions. One is Brook Online. And do you, do you believe that it's serving us well? Is there a better solution? I know some communities have, is it 611 or, you know, some other number, 311 that they, that they can call. Do you anticipate something like that augmenting what we're doing or improving the, the Brook Online type of system? Do we need to?
So I, I think Brook Online is something where we're looking to make continuous improvements. It's, and, and we have made some recently, I want to say was our number around, it's close to 10,000. You know, sort of work orders that we implemented coming through because of requests with Brook Online and our own. So Brook Online absolutely helps us get the information from residents that they think is important, that they want us to look at and try to prioritize. Because we get so many, we cannot address all of them simultaneously. One thing that we have changed this year that I think will help is we've merged Brook Online, the Brook Online system with our work order system. So Brook Online now becomes a work order. And so we are then able to message a little differently when we close. What we're finding though is we, sometimes people will just see sort of the closed action and they're not reading the notes, which are, this has been added to our list for spring work, or we've forwarded this to the Health and Human Resources Department. And so it's not that easy to change some of these automated messaging through the software companies. So we are working to make that better so that what we're doing with the requests that we receive is more clear and responsive to the residents. So I think that's where it's falling short right now is residents don't always understand that their, that their request has been received and what is going to happen with it. So I think that's on us to continue trying to improve. But I actually think it's an excellent tool and we do use that to incorporate into all of our work.
And then the last point, I'm going to do a little PR for you. So, you know, for many months now, we've been talking about sidewalks and road conditions and, you know, how to tackle the issue of, of trying to get caught up. And I just, I do want to thank you and congratulate you for the effort that you've put in. Not only to help us in leadership figure out the type of funding that you need. You need a lot of funding, more than, than we have. But you are actively working to address, prioritize and tweak the approach so that in addition to working to make sure that we have safe roads, we're also actively working to repave, repair and improve the, the quality of our existing streets and sidewalks. And I just, it's not a question, I just want to acknowledge that that is happening and the public should see, and I believe they are seeing active work that's taking place now.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for that.
So I also want to praise you for the work that you do at the department. And thank you for a great, for all, all of you do, sorry. And thank you for a really very useful presentation, both here in the room, but also your written presentation, which was very helpful. And connecting it to your master plan, I think is something that maybe other departments should do. Their, theirs would be different, but you know, it's a good way to, to sort of connect what you're doing with what you say you're doing.
Yep. And we have so many requests that come in. It helps us make sure we're on mission for the town.
Yeah. So one of your divisions that people are very excited about, looking forward to with anticipation and wondering when will it be online is your sustainability and natural resources division. Yeah, I'm not sure that everyone, you know, connects the two. But I'd like you to sort of talk about the connection between sustainability and natural resources, which I assume is the tree canopy, stormwater drainage issues. And, you know, the, the infrastructure that makes it possible for us to have a sustainable, you know, system.
Wonderful. Thank you for asking the question. So climate initiatives, sustainability, climate resiliency has always been a part of our goals, as part of our strategic plan in public works. We think about climate readiness, we think about emergency response, we think about our infrastructure and how we will adapt and change over time. With this new division, we will continue to look at all of that. Yes, the green infrastructure and stormwater, but really be thinking more broadly about sustainability, about, you know, our climate change goals for the entire town. It'll be working with the select board and what are the select board's goals? How do you want to see that prioritized and rolled out? And then working with our various boards and commissions, the AB in particular, to develop a work plan with them. So I think the benefit of this position with this approach being in public works is to operationalize the climate resiliency initiatives and sustainability initiatives into ser, public service, into capital projects and do that within the town. And then leverage that and take that broader and out to the community. So I think that with this team, they think about climate initiatives already. And so there's a great team in place to support this new director. And so I think that it's really exciting. I'm hoping that we can make an announcement very soon.
We're waiting.
Yep, yep. I think very, very soon. And I'll also say that I have been, I presented an org chart tonight. This is where I think public works can be most effective. I think that this is, this is a strategy where we can leverage positions that we have, the new positions that I think need to be created in order for us to be effective. In the past, the, it's really been impossible. I think there's been one person that has been asked to wear too many hats and just really, you know, could not do everything that the community is asking for. So I think this structure will certainly make a big difference. And I have been working very hard to try to secure grant funding for us to kickstart this so that we can bring those two new positions onboard and then truly demonstrate what we can accomplish when we have the right expertise and people power to do that.
And I, I know, I'm going to say, I assume that you're tied in with comprehensive planning process also because it seems to me that a lot of the natural resource issues that we have in town, like rising water tables and things like that, really require coordination between, you know, comprehensive planning, you know, for a variety of things as well as, you know, what, what we do in, in natural resources, I guess subdivision, so. But at any rate, you know, everyone is excited about getting this off the ground and.
Yep. I couldn't agree more with the link to the comprehensive plan as well. And really that overarching look at the whole community. I was on the selection committee for that consultant team with select board member Warren and will be very involved, as will the directors, in helping our director of planning, community development, Cara Bruton, in every and any way we can to help that be the best plan it possibly can be for the community.
There are no walls between our departments. Okay, it's just the two of us. So any other questions?
Actually, I do, I have one, one more question actually, since we have time. 7:30 is when Mike's coming back? Wait some time. You don't have to be, you don't have to fill it till 7:30. You do not. But I do have, there was, I've gotten, actually all of us have gotten a number of questions about the Amory Park project, the redesign and effort. And it just might be a great time to get some clarity on this, specifically around the clay courts. There was quite a few emails to us. I think I got some phone calls, primarily from folks that play tennis and they're, they're concerned about the, the clay tennis courts being replaced. Now, I'm not asking for specifically about that, but really the community needs to bring that feedback and those concerns and their desires to the design review. What's, what's the path for them versus emailing the select board, which, you know, it doesn't help a lot. They really need to get plugged into this process, right? Maybe we could speak a little bit about that.
Absolutely. I think that I'll ask Director Vecchio to, to correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong about any of this because the, the CIP item was developed and put in place envisioning replacement of the clay courts. There's, and it's a little unusual in that Amory Playground and the athletic field like was a bigger project, but the fields were done first and then this, this second part really identified four other key areas that needed a full renovation or replacement. So any concerns or advocacy about those clay courts? What they should look like? That should go to the Park and Recreation Commission Design Review Committee. That is where those conversations happen. It is, it's the committee that wants that feedback from the public. They want to know that this is a valuable resource. Here's the community that it serves. It's why it's so unique and important. And so I do think that potentially those letters in essence going to the select board is almost lost. You know, that it would be, not that, I mean, you'll share it with us, we'll share it with them. But I think that their voice is better heard going right to those design review.
And there's, and there's a, a project page, right? On your, right, right, that they can go to and it has contact information and schedules for when the next meeting is going to happen.
And all the presentations that have already been had, so.
Okay. So, all right. So they, so, so I redirected some folks and apparently they went to the right place.
I'll just share for the audience that, that comment was that there's been over 120 comment letters or feedback that, that the department has received in the last three days.
Okay. Well, good. Thank you.
Any other questions from other members of the board?
No.
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank my staff for being here. They're often so patient and sit here and they're, they're incredible professionals. They manage wonderful teams of employees that work really hard for this town, that work really hard and care about the work that Public Works does. And so often you have to sit here and listen to me, so I'm so sorry about that. But I appreciate everything that you do and the team that we have. So, thank you.
And we appreciate you too. And, and the fact that you're here in person is really special for us after all these years of Zoom meetings. I mean, it really makes a difference to see who you are in person. Some, sometimes we run into you in the sort of regular course of business, but not all the time, so.
Thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Thanks all.
Okay, next is Language Access Plan. I'll wait for.
I can promote Yawana for that or are we, are you looking to vote on that tonight?
No, you can't vote on it, but it can be, at least the item, the item can be.
No, you can't vote on it, but it can be, at least the item, the item can be presented as part of the meeting, and then we can.
That's perfect, I was just checking, all right. Juana's being voted now.
All right, so now I want Caitlin, Caitlin Starr.
Oh, sorry, we're doing ICR first, I thought we were doing CD, I'm sorry. I have my, I have my schedule mixed up. Sorry Juana, it is Caitlin's time right now, Caitlin, I'm promoting you to a panel with Ahmed as well.
Hello, Ahmed is actually, our new Language Access Coordinator, will actually be doing the presentation. Tonight, I'm just here to help answer any questions that predate his start.
Ahmed, you should be glued to your screen, let me know if you have any trouble.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen in just a second. Sorry, one. Is everyone able to see?
Yep.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone, members of the board, fellow town colleagues. My name's Ahmed Hamza. It's Ahmed Hamza in Arabic, but of course I will hold you all accountable to pronouncing my name in Arabic, excuse me. But I'm the Language Access Coordinator for the town, I just started in early March. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm going to be talking to you all about the Language Access Policy and our Language Access Plan. But before I get into that, I wanted to go over some of the linguistic demographics that we have here in the town, so. According to some census data and also some of the information that our town organizations have been telling us, around 30% of the town residents are foreign-born and they speak a language other than English. These populations are abbreviated as LOTE individuals. And a total of 10% of the population are self-revokedly limited in their ability to communicate effectively in English. These are limited English proficiency or LEP individuals. Of course, these individuals are protected by laws such as the Civil Rights Act. And so any instances of exclusion based on linguistic diversity or regional origin is of course to be avoided. And the majority of LOTE and immigrant clients, so 91% of the clients that work with community organizations in Brookline do not know how to request public services because of this language barrier, or they are under-informed. And 70% of those clients cite this language barrier as one of the obstacles to participating in, you know, accessing town resources programs and so on. And so our Language Access Policies is designed to basically combat this, to ensure that our LOTE and LEP residents have access to all of the town's public information, public resources and programs. And this equitable access or ability to access this information for these LOTE and LEP residents is what's called Language Access. And so making sure that these folks have just as much access to all public-facing information, as much access as those who are proficient in English. And so this policy has external and internal implications. Externally, of course, it's to allow, again, access to these residents, to, to public programs and resources. But internally, this is to sort of guide us in changing our policies and our ways of engaging with the public, and really having Language Access at the back of our minds whenever we're, we're public-facing. And so, once this policy is approved, town departments will receive a copy of this and further guidance will be provided, you know, within 30 days. But of course, this is an ongoing conversation. And implementation of the Language Access Policy is done through the Language Access Plan, which I will go over right now. So the Language Access Plan, or the LAP, was developed through collaboration with Language Equity and Access Partners. And the first thing, of course, we needed to know are, who are these residents in Brookline? What languages do they speak? And so, again, thanks to US Census data, and of course, the information provided by Brookline Public Schools, by our town departments, and by different organizations in the town, we have a good idea of the language demographics. There are, of course, different size communities. For example, category one languages are those that are most spoken across the town. And so my understanding is that languages such as Mandarin, Cantonese, Russian, and Spanish are among the major languages in Brookline. And so these category one languages should always be considered when we're facing the public. And of course, category two languages are still spoken in the town, but less common. And so you might see languages like Korean, Japanese, Hindi, Urdu, and so on. And so we do have a good amount of data on the languages that are spoken, but it's important to, of course, know which languages are significantly spoken in the town. And of course, we have to understand the town departments and how much they engage with the public. And so there are, of course, departments that engage quite a lot with the public. So departments such as Planning, Community Development, Diversity, and Health, Public Health. These departments have all been engaging with me and sort of had introductory meetings about our plans for Language Access, and there will be consistent engagement with these public-facing departments to ensure that all of our public-facing efforts are vetted through the Language Access Plan. So given the language needs, our main strategy for ensuring Language Access is translation of essential documents that are facing the public. This includes, of course, not limited to this, but things like flyers, notices for different programs, services, benefits, and especially alerts. And in terms of spoken language interpreting services for public meetings, of course, there are virtual options for interpreting as well as in-person. And occasionally, for those who visit us at Town Hall, vendors also provide live 24-hour, 7 interpreting that we will also be taking advantage of to ensure that we are effectively communicating with anyone who stops by Town Hall, regardless of the languages that they speak. And of course, we have bilingual staff who are always willing to volunteer to help us translate, interpret, and, you know, meet the needs of multilingual residents. And at some point, each department will have their own Language Access Liaisons, which will hopefully take care of the specific Language Access needs for each department. And I will be collaborating with them to ensure that things are going well. And so staff, all staff, including the liaisons, will be trained, make sure that they understand the language needs, the kinds of services the language vendors provide, and the specific ways of applying Language Access to their departments. At the same time, we will be collaborating with community organizations to implement accountability measures, make sure that residents are actually benefiting from Language Access. And so we will be asking for feedback from these organizations. And not only for feedback, but to help us let residents know that these services are available, that they should never be hesitant to ask for this kind of service. And that we're, you know, we have the ability, the capacity to make sure that they're able to engage with us in the language they feel comfortable in, whether it's, whether it's English or any other language. And so from here, I'm working closely with Caitlin, my other colleagues in Diversity, as well as town departments, to develop guidelines and resources for staff to request translation and interpreting. And identifying these department liaisons to continue to implement Language Access for each department. I will, of course, be overseeing this. We are slowly developing a network of vendors who will be providing many helpful services and outreach, which is incredibly important to ensure that residents know that, again, we are able to provide these services and, but they're able to engage with us and give us feedback and let us know if this is meeting their needs or things need to be improved. And lastly, of course, like I mentioned earlier, feedback mechanism is really important for tweaking any things that we need to, to fix in the way we are administering Language Access. That's all we have right now, so I'm going to stop sharing. But essentially, that's our intention with, with Language Access. I'll give Caitlin a second if you would like to add anything. And of course, we are happy to take questions at this time.
Caitlin?
Thank you, I was gonna say, thank you so much, Ahmed, for all the work that he's already done with us over the past month and a half. And I do just want to say that the data he was showing from that first slide is all from the Language Access Needs Assessment that was conducted by the Language Equity and Access Partners. So that is, we haven't done any new surveying or anything that you haven't seen before. That is all data that was picked out of there, and I just want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you. Any questions from you, Paul?
I do have a couple. First, I.
Ask one and then.
One, okay, okay. I have a couple.
Don't hog the question.
We can go back. So thank you for the presentation. I, I'm trying to, there's a huge amount of work here. If, and I'm trying to get my head around, around it. Because I think about all the communication that takes place just about town meeting. The creation of warrant articles, the submission of warrant articles, the publishing of the warrant, the public hearings on the warrant, amendments, et cetera, et cetera. That's just one thing. How do we, I guess, how do we prioritize this? Is there a legal requirement that's like a baseline that we have to make sure we achieve? And then there's also, what do we need to do in order to be able to service our LEP residents? How do we, how do we deal with this, I guess is my question.
Ahmed, you want to take that first, and I can follow up?
Yeah, absolutely. It's definitely a big lift, it's a very big lift. There are several things that I've, I've considered, things that I've worked when I was doing this in Boston. First, department liaisons, they'll be able to really plan well ahead, because they are the ones that will, I will train them in Language Access, and they'll be well-trained in what their departments do individually. So they will have the foresight to know what's coming, especially if it's a lot of notices, a lot of events that are coming up. But also, the Language Access Plan is flexible enough to allow us to, for example, condense documents or recycle things such as public notices, which are essentially going to carry the same amount of information every time you send them to the public. These kinds of small strategies that make it a lot easier to translate things, to get them out in the public, and also our partnerships with the community organizations who make it very easy to get all of this information out there. So I'm hoping that through collaboration with these different departments and with the town organizations, that even though it is a lot of information and content that might need to be sent out, we'll have different ways of doing this, including using social media, email, things that make it easier to translate and also distribute information out to the public. But the, the policy itself is, is very much flexible. And it'll allow us to, you know, through, through a lot of trial and experience, figure out what the best way is to, to send this information out to the public.
I guess LEPs are, we are, we are required to provide, you know, meaningful access for everyone. And so that means, where necessary, publishing in languages that are spoken in the community. So, you know, you know, the, the correct, the correct translation and the correct services provided. How we go about that is the point of this Language Access Plan. And we're aware, you know, not only is it a heavy lift, it's a significant cost barrier. A big part of the initial spending on the, from the override was, went, is going to go towards some of these efforts. And in the other areas, we're just going to be very clear that, you know, the efforts will need, the money will need to be spent as appropriate on translation services where we, where we need to have them.
Right, and I guess, sorry, just a quick follow-up, the, I think the operative point there is where we need to have them. I don't understand where we need to have them, because there is a huge amount of information.
That's, that's what, that's a huge amount of what Ahmed's work is going to be, is going to be figuring out, is going to be working with departmental liaisons to determine, all right, what is the, what is the vital information that we need to be able to provide to people on demand? What is something that we, or what is something that is going to need to be published and promulgated in multiple different languages right away? What is something that might need to be translated on demand for a user? How do we, you know, how do we interact with people who may come, whoever are LEP, who come directly to the counter? You know, those are all, those are different questions. But to your point about, like, use county media as an example. All right, we, that may not be a situation where we, when we promulgate amendments, we publish every single document in the four major languages that we know are spoken in Brookline. But what we say is, we're promulgating this document and we, translation services are available, should you need it.
Okay.
Okay, that was basically my question also, because in, in the policy, there's a definition for vital documents. And I'm thinking of our board packet every week. Fifty-two weeks, well, less than 52 weeks a year, but still, many, many weeks. And the, the translation in the four or five languages has to be both accurate and timely. So I guess, you know, maybe, you know, Chaz answered that question, and you answered it in terms of the flexibility within the policy. I, I, I'm just somewhat concerned that we've bitten off a little more than we can chew effectively. But, you know.
You know, wherever possible, we want to provide meaningful access to folks. But I also think that it's funny, it's funny too, when we think about, what is, what are people's typical day-to-day interactions with government? It's not select board packet, it's, how do I pay my parking ticket?
Well, some people it is.
For some people it is, that's right, but there's, and we want to be, and that's, and that's where we say to folks. If you, if that's, if that's the level of access you need to government, or you feel you want from government, we want to be able to provide, you know, reasonable translation services to allow you to interact with the government on that level. But when we think of what is a vital document for living and existing in Brookline, we want to be cognizant of, you know, what, when, when legal notices go out to folks, for example. You know, notices to a butters, for example. Those are kind of the kinds of things where I would think, in most cases, we would be looking at having those be translated into multiple languages at the start, or having a document that goes out with them in multiple different languages saying, for translation services, scan this, scan this QR code, call this number.
Right.
Come to this office, which is what, you know, I think of what we do.
So I think, you know, one of, just one of the things that I believe we, we have to think about is if this becomes part of the normal course of some, some work group or commission's work, it's going to add an amount of time in built-in overhead, right? To all the work that they do. And I, I think about the comprehensive plan. We just, you know, I know the amount of delay that added to the process of just getting the, the call for, you know, membership applications. You know, there was certainly some costs associated with that, but time.
Yep.
And we're not fast as it is, you know, and nimble. So this, this will be, it'll be interesting to see how, how this works its way into, systemically into what we're doing.
And that's where it's really important for us to be well-coordinated to ensure that we do not, that it does not become a burden to us, but instead, that as we get better at it, it becomes second nature to say, aha, this is a document that needs to go out in these languages? Great, we have, we have a template ready to go, that's not a problem. So as we get better at it, the burden on us will decrease.
I'm not so much concerned about notices and sort of the routine documents that we put out. That's a heavy lift, but we can, we can lift it. What I'm concerned about is the fact that the policy does not include language to the effect of, you know, documents that are appropriate or reasonable responses to, you know, document requests. For example, you know, our board packet. I mean, you know, if someone asks for the entire packet translated into Mandarin, I'm not sure how we can do that.
Again, I mean, it's, right, there, there are these issues of, what is the access, you know, what is the access for? What is the access needed? And again, we're balancing the needs of people who, you know, live in the community and making sure that they have meaningful access, what does that look like? But it can be, it can be very case-specific.
And that's cool, I, I would like to see some language in here that, that talks about, you know, potential limitations, not in terms of what people need, but just in terms of us, you know, identifying things that maybe they don't really need, and, and because they haven't really thought through what, what's important.
No, yeah, I mean, the issue is always, if you can't read it, you don't know what's important and what isn't. We gotta, we gotta think through how we, how we address those issues.
And I'm also thinking, what, what is our litigation risk? When you don't have those limitations? But, you know.
And are we setting an expectation, uh, with this policy that, that is, does the community expect now that these types of services and a certain level of translation is automatic? And does that create some risk to, to the town? It's just, it's unclear to me. This seems like we boiled the ocean, um, a bit, and I worry about, uh, about that.
We can definitely take this back and make sure, because I don't think it's, that's not the intent, right?
Okay.
The intent is to provide meaningful access. It's not to, it's not to say every document everywhere will be translated on demand into a language of your choosing. Like, that's not the, that's not what this is about. This is about realizing that, you know, we have communities here that speak different languages and have different needs. We wanna be responsive to those communities and make sure that they can participate in government. Uh, and that's what the end goal of this is. It's not, you know, it's not a universal translation service.
And I assume, Ahmed, having worked in Boston, I assume in, 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 uh, language access, uh, probably could, you know, give us some guidance in terms of, uh, what to expect.
Absolutely. Uh, there are several, several things I could, I could go on and on about, but, um, I wanted to, uh, touch on the point earlier about the, the translating, uh, a, a lot of content at once. And this is something that we had to really strategize on, but it was a very simple fix, which is condensing information into a different format, using fact sheets, for example, um, that pull out and extract only the essential information uh, into a three-page document, for example, or even a two-page document. Um, making the, um, the, the parts of these documents, the, the most impactful parts, um, the focus, so that residents are, one, it's easier for us to translate. Two, it's easier for residents to read in their languages and, of course, um, significantly reduce cost. And so these are things that, um, uh, just one example of things that we've done, uh, in the past, um, to address these points, certainly is a big lift. And, and there are many, many ways that we can, um, go about reducing cost, effectively communicating and, uh, making this efficient. And another thing I want to, one last thing I want to mention is that the intention I have going into this is, is to make language access, um, compatible with the processes that already exist. So I'm, I'm trying my best to not disrupt the workflows of each department. Um, certainly not making things take longer, but to, um, adapt our language access, uh, policy um, based on how long it takes different departments to get documents ready and so on. Um, so the intention is to, uh, certainly not to make things longer, but to make language access compatible with each department, which of course means that, um, there will be department-specific language access plans, um, that really complement what each department does. And so hopefully, the combination of these things would, um, make this, uh, run smoothly, cost-effective, but also impactful for, uh, for our residents. Um, and so I, I definitely look forward to collaborating and view all the town departments to making this happen.
Yeah, the, the idea of a fact sheet is, is, I, I think, you know, the solution to a lot of our problems. I just wanna make sure that that is contemplated in the policy.
Of course.
So that, you know, someone who wants to sue this, the, the town just because they don't like us, you won't have, uh, this as an opportunity to.
That's right.
So as, so as an example, um, I think what I just heard is, um, that essential information, we could translate the agenda for the select board, but not the packet.
Yes.
Providing essential information to know that the meeting's taking place and what we're gonna be discussing.
That's right.
And, and, and the key documents, I mean, it's.
Right, if there are key documents, for example, a memo from one department, that's two pages that summarizes what's going on. Yes, we can tell.
Okay.
Alternatively, there, there is also the option of, um, sending notices that ask residents to request translation for certain things, especially the things that might take longer. Um, that might be more difficult to vet through language access, asking residents to request them by certain date. Uh, if they would like them to be translated and then doing the translations based on the request that we get. Um, that's another, uh, option that we have to, uh, hopefully make things easier while, again, delivering, um, uh, essential information to the public. But of course, these are all options that we can, you know, look at and work on, um, as we pro- progress.
Great.
So this is gonna come back to us, uh.
Yeah, yeah, because we have to vote it, and, and we can't do that tonight.
Well, we'll take this feedback back and we'll take a look, um, and we'll make sure that it comes back to you.
Yeah, and, uh, just in one closing point, it would, I don't understand the process of this service, you know. Uh, there's, and how it is going to in, integrate into what we do today. It said that this should be, you know, frictionless, essentially. Um, it would be helpful to know, like, are we using third-party services? Do that, what's the turnaround for those thirty-party, third-party services? Contracted, does it get bid once? I mean, I just, I don't understand how this stuff happens.
Yeah, and it's gonna, it's gonna vary department by department, too. Um, you know, for example, Language Line is a service we have, we've historically had access to that provides, you know, you pick up the phone, you call them, and you can, you can get translation services on the line. That's one aspect. That's gonna help some departments, but not others.
Some of this is technical information that may need specialized translation.
Correct. And that's more expensive.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, welcome aboard, Ahmed. I'm, you know, yeah, I, I've met you, but I don't think you've been officially introduced to our vast TV audience.
Thank you, everyone. It's, it's definitely nice to, uh, have that audience a month in. Um, but yes, thank you all for the welcome, and I, I very much look forward to working with you all on this.
Great.
Thank you for taking the time. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Caitlin, for, uh, all you do.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, bye. Okay, next, uh, CBDG Advisory Committee Recommendations.
Uh, I'm not seeing Iwana online. Is Iwana in the room?
She's in the room.
We are.
Oh, wonderful.
Thanks, Charlie. Um, so my name is Cara Bruton. I'm the Director of Planning, and I'm here just to give you, um, a little bit of a big update for us. Um, Iwana Lindo Smith is our new Housing and Community Planning Director. So she's now the Manager of our Housing and Community Planning Division. Um, I am absolutely thrilled to share this news with you. Um, she, Iwana first came to the town two score ago.
Two score.
Two score ago, we were just doing the math. Um, but every day she walks in as if it's her first day. Um, she's been serving as the interim manager since last fall. Um, she has obviously a depth of experience with town operations and community partnerships. But she's also a natural manager and leader. Um, she inspires all of us to be creative, impactful, and even cheerful in our work, which is a nice thing to do. Um, her education background's in business administration. She also has experience in management. Um, certainly knows, um, anything related to anything financial. Um, started in the comptroller's office here in town. Um, has a deep knowledge in local, state, and, um, federal affordable housing, um, programs, opportunities, social services, especially the organizations in town and how they deliver their programs to benefit Brookline residents. Um, she comes every week with new ideas and ways to, for, uh, town residents to benefit from funding or different programs that are available. Um, and she is excited about adding and preserving our affordable housing stock. Um, she's going to be developing and supporting that very talented staff. Um, but often, many of them are new to their positions in this division. And so, um, in summary, I'm thrilled to have Iwana in this position. So, just wanna introduce her.
Yeah, let, let me, uh, add. I had, I wrote out a, uh, not a long, but a couple paragraphs about Iwana, because I worked with her when I was chairing the, uh, CDBG Committee. And, you know, praising, you know, the, the work that she did and, and, uh, uh, how she helped the committee, uh, through that process and, and, you know, gave us insights and all. My, my computer crashed and, and I lost those notes. So I, I have to talk off, off the cuff. Uh, I'm really excited and glad to, uh, have you work in this new position. I know, um, that, uh, you, you do an incredible job to, to help, uh, get these, uh, these, uh, um, uh, grants through the process. And, uh, for the benefit of very important entities and, and institutions in our town. So wel- welcome, congratulations, and, um, let's hear from you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cara. Um, I have also with me today, um, one of my staff members, um, Jacob Collins. Um, we both worked very hard together on the, um, CDBG process. So I brought him here so that, um, we can answer any questions you may have.
And recognize him.
Yes, he's our new community planner. He's been in the position since the fall also. So it's, um, we're all just trying to work our way through all this.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your patience with that. Um, I'm here tonight just to, um, present to the Select Board the CDBG Advisory Committee recommendations that we have for the use of our CDBG funding this year. We have, um, normally, um, get an allocation of about 1.3 million. At this point in time, we're not sure exactly if we'll get that exact amount. But in case it's such a long process, we have to move along and assume that we're gonna be level-funded. So that's why we, we're here to start, you know, keep the process going. Um, we have advertised our annual action plan, and this plan states what we're going to be doing, um, with our funding when we do get it. I was told that, um, we should be hearing from HUD by May eighth as to exactly what our allocation is. Right now, we're just working on the 1.3. Um, what we have decided, what the board has decided to do, it's when we do get our actual allocation, we are going to, whatever percentage it, it is, um, lower or higher, we will change these numbers by that. However, whatever we have voted on, the programs, projects that we're gonna be working on, they are not going to change. It's just probably the amount changes up or down depending on what we get. Um, just a moment. I'm sorry. Okay, um, the projects that we, um, we're working on this, this year, it's some that, we had a public process that, for the CDBG Advisory Board, this took place on March eleventh and thirteenth. On those nights, um, the the applications that came in, they had to present them to us. And so in the process of, um, they had to tell us, you know, how they'll use the money, and if they weren't to get enough money, how would they survive? What would happen with the programs? The board listened to this, and this is part of what they used to make their, um, recommendation to you. We have, um, that public, our budget recommendations, I will get to that, is, um, for this year, we have staffing costs, which is about four, five twenty-five, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We have, um, housing, which under housing, we have the Brookline Housing Authority, Resident Health and Safety Projects, that we have, um, set aside five hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars. And this is for a project two, for the High Street Veterans Building for community, for capital projects. And we're hoping that, that money will be able to leverage some funds from the state, two and a half times that amount, which would really help the B, BHA and the projects that they're working on. We also gave the Brookline Community Development Corporation, formerly BIC, um, sixty-three thousand dollars, and that is, that should be helping to renovate three of their bathrooms at one fifty-four to one fifty-six Boylston Street. I tend to get that wrong. I'm always saying Beacon. It's Boylston Street. And then, uh, on our public services, we have, um, allocated some funds to the Brookline Housing Authority Resident Resiliency Program, which is a social program, and it does help, um, residents of, of the Housing Authority or any low-income, um, resident that may reach out to them. We have allocated forty-five thousand to them. The community, the trips program, which is a transportation program for the Council on Aging, we have decided, the board decided on forty thousand dollars. Steps to Success, which is a program that helps kids in the summertime to stay off the streets and give them some training. That program got forty-five thousand dollars. In the Brookline Food Pantry, which for the food insecurity that we do still have, um, forty-five thousand dollars, and the Brookline Center for Community Mental Health, they were, um, awarded twenty thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars for a, to help with a case management um, salary. And this is, the case manager, it's, from their application, is someone who would help after they've done the mental health and they need help, they'd be able to help refer them to the right places to get the, the help that they need. Um, our annual plan, uh, this is all listed in our annual plan. You can find this plan on, um, our website, the Planning Department website. And if you need information or any questions on any of this, we do ask that you contact myself, and my email is e lindo at brookline ma dot gov. Or you can send an email to Jake Collins, j collins at brookline ma dot gov. We'd be more than happy to answer anything, um, and help you with other questions. Tonight, we're just, um, we're just presenting this to you, the board. Um, it's not a, it's not a hearing, it's just a matter of letting you know about this. So that, um, when we come back, because we will be coming back on May fourteenth, you would be aware of all these things. So if you have questions or any corrections that need to be made, we do ask that you let us know about this. It, the annual plan is now out for comment, and we're waiting for, um, if anyone sends in any comment, they, they're instructed to send it to me. Um, that way, it will be included in the annual plan, and we will mention that at the next meeting. So on May fourteenth, we'll be in asking you to approve, to, to vote to approve, um, our application to HUD. And that's what that is, and approve the annual plan and the application to HUD at the same time. Um, I think that's about it that we have at this time. Does anybody have any questions or?
So you have a hearing after you get the final numbers?
Yes, we're hoping it will come through on May eighth. And this is what will happen. If we don't get it by the fourteenth, I won't be here with you on the fourteenth. I have to wait for those numbers because we can't send it to HUD until they say, okay, we think we're gonna give you another 1.3. If they don't say that, I can't move.
Yeah.
So we, we won't, the numbers, next time I come to you, the numbers will be solid. Um, that's what we'll have, and at that time.
Right. Any questions from other members of the board? Mr. Warren.
I don't really have a question. I just, uh, have a comment. Um, I wanna thank, I, I got to chair this, as you know. You handed it off to me. Um.
It was, it's in good hands.
It, uh, it was a, a distinct pleasure to work with, with Iwana and, um, and, and Jacob. Uh, they ran a very tight ship, very professional. Um, and we had a unanimous advisory board a- as we went through this process and the recommendations. As you know, Bernard, um, there's always far more requests need than there is, uh, money available. Um, and I think that was the most difficult part for me was to have to say no um, to, to many things. And I think in particular, the Brookline Food Pantry was one of the ones that struck me the hardest because food is such a basic need.
Yes.
And they came, uh, looking at requesting a much higher number. Um, and it was not possible.
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, and they have more need.
Yes.
So, um, but I, I, I appreciate that you, you did it for many years. Um, and I know that you wrestled with probably the same types of questions. Um, how to allocate a small amount of money, relatively small amount of money to a big need. So, um, I just wanted to say thank you. It's, it was a pleasure working with you. Um, you do your job, uh, efficiently and always with a smile. So thank you so much, and to Jake as well.
His motto is you get more with honey than with vinegar.
That is true. We could all learn that and live that daily. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So any questions, please feel free to reach out. We're more than happy to answer and take care of it.
Yeah, uh, you, the, um, it, it was very difficult to, you know, from my recollection, it was very difficult to divide up the small amount of money we had to the huge need that was out there. But, you know, the fact that we were able to provide, uh, money through this block grant program, which Nixon, um, established back in, you know, the nineteen seventies, uh, for reasons that aren't really good, but still, um, able to provide, you know, funds that the town couldn't provide in many cases to, uh, deserving, uh, entities, particularly the Housing Authority and all that they do, um, in, in terms of, uh, renovating, uh, many of their properties. I mean, it wasn't everything they needed, but, you know, made a real big, or it made a significant improvement in the lives of, uh, their residents. So it was, uh, it, it's. So it was uh, it it's it's a um meaningful committee to to be on. I I appreciated it and appreciated your work. And uh
Thank you.
You you're continuing to do uh that 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 important uh job that uh
Thank you.
We do.
It's it's so hard too, because we have to play by the rules that that um, you know, the CDBG rules that HUD has given us. And with the money, we may say one point three, but the social services, they they really get um fifteen percent of that. And there is, we can't spend a penny over that fifteen percent. Or then the town has to pay it back from the general fund. So usually that might be a big problem considering what's going on these days. So um, you know, it's it's just difficult, but thank you guys for for um, thank you very much for all all that you do because it's hard. I kind of just sit and listen to you, guide you a little bit, but I listen to you. I'm trying to, you know, thrash out those few pennies, especially for social services.
Good.
Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Thank you. Carrie, you wanted to say, oh, you're just getting up to leave.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're all set.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll be back on May fourteenth, don't forget.
Oh, you won't.
Then if anything before that, let me know so we can fix things or do whatever we need to do. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hopefully there'll be more uh members of the board here.
Um, yeah, well, seven thirty, we're getting one more, right?
Yes, well, you have, you still have one more thing before then, thankfully. You have uh an interview with a candidate for the Small Business Development.
Right. Is uh Charlie, is uh Chris Moody in the audience there?
See him in the attendees list.
He is in the attendees. Why don't I have the attendees list here?
You need to be promoted to a panelist. We can
Let me get Bernard promoted to a panelist, and uh Chris is also being promoted now.
Thank you, Charlie. Hello, Christopher.
Hi, Bernard, how are you tonight?
I'm good, I'm good. So uh, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in uh being um uh appointed to the Small Business Development Committee um and what you have to offer.
Certainly. So uh, my name is Christopher Muddy. I've lived in Brookline for about ten years. Um, I previously was a small business owner in town. I owned a company called Green Line Growers, and we were a hydroponic farm. We also owned a local food store called Brookline Grown on Pleasant Street. Um, since then, I've been primarily a stay-at-home parent. Um, and then I recently have been appointed to be the next executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. Um, so I am certainly committed to the uh small business community, um, growing it and promoting it, and uh would love to be a member of this committee.
Wow, that's uh reason enough. Um, actually, I I we we knew about your hydroponic uh farm uh many years ago, or a few years ago. And um, it it it's not operating any operative anymore, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we shut down in uh, I think I finished the books in twenty nineteen. Um, thankfully, just before COVID, I'm not sure how we would have operated during during the pandemic, but uh certainly learned a lot as being a small business owner in town, um, that I think will be beneficial to the the rest of the community.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry that we lost that business. It was uh pretty important. Any uh questions from you, Paul?
Uh, sure, Chris, thanks for uh for joining. Um, and I, you know, the the you didn't give the full story about your small business, your um, where was your uh hydroponic farm located?
It was in the Waldo Dergan Project uh building.
I didn't want to mention that.
It's fascinating to me, this business model of being able to have these uh these farms in in such a dense urban location. I had never heard of it before. It's fascinating to me.
Yeah, definitely. Um, and it was uh, there were three repurposed shipping containers. So they were, you know, inside of an old parking garage, um, just an incredible place to grow greens.
Yeah.
Yes, it's it's fascinating. So anyway, I just, I wanted to have a chance to have you get that out there because I I found it fascinating, and I I would hope others uh would as well. I didn't know such a thing was done. Um, what what would be your, you know, three objectives of uh, you know, should you join this uh committee? What would you like to accomplish?
So the the committee has a stated goal of increasing diversity. And that was one of the things that I actually ran for school committee last year on a platform. What is one of my three things that I was really focused on. Um, so definitely increasing the diversity of the business community within Brookline is one of the things that I would love to see that committee really be involved with. Um, a second is uh, one of the things that we're doing for the um, that we have a grant for with the um, the chamber is uh, is the Restaurant Resiliency Program. And so getting um restaurants involved with that program, um, I think I can help kind of make that happen. Um, a third thing with the Small Business Development Committee. Um, and I'd actually have to really kind of think about that, but those are definitely the two that I want to focus on if I'm lucky enough to become a member.
Well, I would, um, I I guess I'd I'd give you a a hint, or something that I'd love to see happen. Um, you know, I I spend a lot of time in our small businesses because I live right behind a lot of them, uh, many of them. Um, down in the St. Mary's area, and just uh, you know, getting to know them, hearing them out, understanding the challenges that they face, um, you know, giving them a voice. Um, they, because many of them are working, you know, eighteen-hour days, uh, just trying to get by. Um, they don't have a lot of time to get plugged into uh Brookline and processes and politics and, you know, they, it's it's very difficult for them to keep up. And many of them aren't, just aren't residents either, so they're, and they're very, very busy. Um, more advocacy, uh, I think, um, you know, for our small businesses. And just, you know, bringing them into the fold, uh, promoting them, giving them a voice. I know we've done some work uh like that before, and we're continuing, but I think it's just, it certainly is a need uh uh for them, and I I'm sure it's a, it's a struggle for for many small businesses just to survive. Um, uh, you know, with with current times and the way with inflation and costs. So anything that we can do to get get them plugged in uh would be really great, especially if they're not in a a a commercial district that's really well organized. Um, you know, there are some that are better organized than others, I think, which corners reasonably well organized and they're connected. But I think there's some others uh that 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 aren't like St. Mary's.
Uh, just want to apologize for the background noise. It's dinner time, so I don't know how much you can hear.
We didn't notice it, so you shouldn't have mentioned it.
Uh, but I I do want to follow up on that, Paul. Uh, so one of my first things that I'm going to do as the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce when I start on Wednesday um, is to do a listening tour. And my initial plan was to do it primarily with members, but you have me thinking maybe I should expand that to the business community in general, just to I'm trying to get out to as many as I can. Um, and then also to hold Zooms where they can just kind of join, hopefully. And I provide them an opportunity to just kind of let me know what they need, and uh I can do that as an advocate.
Good idea. It's a great way to get new members. Yeah.
So um, you you mentioned that uh you're particularly interested in diversity of the business community here in Brookline. Uh, do you have any specific ideas or or suggestions in terms of of um of acting on that that goal? Both as that executive director of the chamber as well as on the committee?
Well, I have a couple of contacts that I've reached out to that, um, and this would be specifically for restaurants um, who highlight restaurants, especially during Black History Month, they highlighted um, businesses throughout the greater Boston area, um, who would be potentially looking to expand. So I think reaching out to those businesses, understanding what's preventing them from coming to Brookline, and then hopefully providing the resources to get them to expand into Brookline, um, if there's a right market fit. Um, so there's, there's plenty of people on social media that are, you know, influencers that are doing that kind of work. Um, so can I, I've been getting in touch with them to get a better sense as to who the restaurants are that could potentially um, you know, look to expand to Brookline.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Christopher. Uh, we're not going to be, of course, we can't because we don't have a forum.
He's he's on if he's on for later because he's joined in the chamber, I thought would be if you wanted to, if you're once you have a quorum, if you wanted to vote, uh, possible. But.
So uh, we may come back to you today, but uh, until then, thank you.
All right, absolutely. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. So your hearings are noticed for seven thirty, and that's when Mike returns to you, so you have a little time. I apologize.
Why don't we take a break?
Adjourn till seven thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do that. Okay, uh, we're going to adjourn until seven thirty. Um, and at at which point uh we will um begin uh our public hearings on warrant articles uh with a full, not a full complement of the board, but at least a quorum of the board. So, thank you. Okay, uh, this is the resumption of the select board meeting for April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. Um, let's get back on the agenda. We have a hearing, warrant article hearings. And I need to find my agenda. The first one is um the police. And 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 Article or Article One of the um special town meeting.
Article Two, collective bargaining.
Right. Okay, uh, do we have someone to speak on this?
I have Ann Braga, Director of Human Resources.
Ann.
Good evening, everyone. Um, can you hear me?
Yep. So, uh, by the way, this is going to be a joint hearing with Article One of the Special Town Meeting, correct?
Uh, yes, we can, we can open, we can have, we can share this with the Special Town Meeting One.
Okay.
Special Town Meeting Two, sorry, Article One.
And that would be the civil service?
Yes.
Okay.
So can you speak on both of them, I assume?
Uh, I believe Chief Pastor is scheduled to be part of the hearing this evening.
We can promote her. Um, I believe, actually, I I think, I think the chief is actually out, she's she's present, but she's not she may not be responsive. She's at an event, so we may want to promote Superintendent Mealy.
Got it. I'm promoting, uh, I threw out a promotion offer to both just in case, um, but.
Okay.
Pulling up my reference materials.
Hello, Superintendent Mealy.
Hi, how is everyone tonight?
Good. Oh, I see uh Chief Pastor's here too. Behind, behind the um
No problem. Thank you.
Knock in there a second.
Touch and go for a little while, but we made it.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Ann, do you want to start?
Sure. So warrant article two for the spring town meeting will include two collective bargaining agreements as well as an attachment that's related to the Police Department Collective Bargaining um MOA. So we'll start with the Teamsters. The Teamsters are um, present the uh dispatchers for the town of Brookline. And we are presenting a twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four um MOA, which provides for um wage increases of one percent in fiscal twenty-two, three percent in fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four. Now, this will be a fully retroactive um collective bargaining agreement. Um, they did come to an agreement shortly before town meeting, but with not enough and not enough time in the fall town meeting to be able to present it for action. Um, the dispatchers will have an have an added holiday of June twelfth effective um July one of twenty-one. Um, an increase in the training officer stipend, um, where more senior dispatchers train the newer dispatchers to go from two fifty, two dollars and fifty cents an hour to three, three dollars an hour. Increase in the education incentive for dispatchers. An additional one step effective July twenty twenty-three. And an increase in the gap between steps in in as of July twenty twenty-three. The dispatcher's gaps were um one percent apiece. Um, and so this has been increased to provide um more of an increase as dispatchers uh spend more time in service. And they have agreed to a reasonable suspicion drug and alcohol testing policy as well as the um Related Wellness Day for annual physicals and cancer screenings. Um, I don't know if Melissa wants to put up the Oscar or if you want me to.
You probably have it more readily available, Ann. I wasn't prepared to present this one.
So uh, I can sharing this. Thank you. So what you'll see here, and I'll just expand the size. Um, you'll see the cost, total cost of the contract implementation is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, two hundred and hundred and fifty-one, two. Um, with a roll increase of ten percent. You'll also see fiscal twenty-five cost item, and that is um the new senior step and increase differential, the carryover into the the new fiscal year of nine thousand dollars. Questions on the dispatcher's contract?
Uh, not for me. Um, Mike? No, your hand's not raised. Paul?
No, I think I'm okay.
Okay, good. No, fine, thank you, Ann.
Sorry, no questions.
Pardon me?
So I'll move on from there?
Nothing, right.
Yes, we can move on from there, I think. Thank you.
Okay. So the police union, police union contract is a one-year contract for fiscal twenty-four. And then followed by a three-year contract for fiscal twenty-five through twenty-seven. Now, there was some discussion of this at um advisory, and so there might be some repetition for those that are ha- have attended both. Um, in fiscal twenty-three, there is a three percent cost of living increase, or fiscal twenty-four, a three percent cost of living increase similar to all the other COLAs for the other unions during that fiscal year. For fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six. Fiscal twenty, excuse me, fiscal twenty-five and twenty-six have a two percent increase. Fiscal twenty-seven has a one and a half percent increase, which is the the standard for COLAs that we have outlined um, in the budget proposal. There is an addition of a six-year step in fiscal twenty-five and an eight-year step in fiscal twenty-six to provide additional opportunities for retaining officers after their initial three years of service. There's also a hazardous duty or regional tactical response stipend stipend, which converts the post from the post stipend that was um approved during the JLMC process. With an additional one point five percent in fiscal twenty-five and one percent in both fiscal twenty-six and twenty-seven, recognizing the duties of Twenty First Century Policing and regional response to major events and responsibilities of multiple agencies in active shooters incidents. This also includes a departmental removal from civil service, um, which is outlined in Attachment A, providing a similar process um, for um, setting up standards for hiring, promotion, and um other related um issues to uh service as patrol officers. Existing um, members of the union will be um continued in the civil service process. And um, there is an updated provision for sick leave, military leave, and the grievance procedure. Um, and the addition of the date in holiday, a full release for the union president to focus on member issues and union management relations. Attachment A includes the changes um for hiring and promotion um, that include uh setting up a vendor to provide assessments for promotional opportunities as well as creating the selection and hiring of new officers based on written procedures. And um, also that the discipline would continue to be under the private principles of just cause and include And also that the discipline would continue to be under the principles of just cause and include an appeals process, but not specifically to the Civil Service Commission. I'm going to look to share my screen again with the cost grid for the police union contract. You'll see the cost items out here, and we have Melissa and Charlie walk through tales of all of this.
Ann, could you talk into the mic? I can't really understand you.
Sure. The cost grid is being shared currently. Melissa and Charlie are on the, on the meeting, be able to answer any specific questions on this. Then any other questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from the board? Don't see Mike's hand up, Paul?
I guess my, my only question is just I wanna confirm the, the budgeting for this, Jess.
Melissa and Charlie, I think can confirm this. As part of the upcoming discussion of the budget in your memo, Melissa, you mentioned that there's these additional adjustments for the police budget. That's due to this contract being settled, correct? There's nothing in there above and beyond the, the additional costs to settle this contract that we identified.
Correct, so we have funding for fiscal twenty five allocated in the budget. When the financial plan came out, we had a certain assumption around where we were with collective bargaining, we were still in ongoing negotiations. With the finalized agreement and MOA, we discussed with the board in executive session, the options to fund the contract, and so the, the adjustments that you'll see as part of Article ten get us to the funding that we need for this contract for fiscal twenty five.
And so Melissa, thank you for that, and so that, that is consistent with our prior discussion that the board had around funding.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Okay, any other questions? So, coming out of civil service, our existing officers will still be subject to the disciplinary and other procedures in civil service. They'll also be subject to the promotion list in civil service, correct, or is that not correct? No?
They maintain their rights for discipline. And the promotion process moving forward, everyone would fall under the new promotion process.
Right, it's only for discipline.
Okay.
Hiring and promotions will be, civils will be, will be our own process going forward.
Good, okay. Any other questions? Mike, nothing?
No.
All, nothing? Okay. This is a public hearing. Charlie, could you see if there's anyone in the Zoom audience interested in speaking? I see two individuals here in the room. Neither one of, has raised their hand, so.
Sure, folks on Zoom can use the hand raise or Q and A feature to let us know that they'd like to make a public comment at this public hearing. So again, just click the, the raise hand button, or enter your name or request in the Q and A, and we will promote you to speak. Bernard, we have six attendees in the audience right now. A couple of those are staff, even, so only a few attendees and no one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature at this time.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. This is not something that I think we should vote on, unless other people disagree. So we will take this up at a later meeting of the select board. You disagree?
I, I'd be prepared to vote unless you feel that.
Yeah.
We have the full board here for that, or, because John's not here next week, right?
He's not here next week?
Right, he's out for the next two meetings, or for this meeting and next meeting, sorry.
Bernard, the board's already voted to approve both MOAs, so a favorable action vote in this article wouldn't be, it wouldn't be unheard of.
Okay, well, then let's do it. I move approval of Warren Article two, collective bargaining, and Warren Article one of the special town meeting two, with respect to civil service. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, that's two off our list. Next, Article six, unpaid bills. I think Melissa's gonna tell us about all of our unpaid bills, if any.
So unfortunately, we do have some unpaid bills. We're gonna need to have Finance Director Lincoln Heineman talk about the unpaid bills that have come across our desk, so Lincoln's just been promoted.
Hello, good evening. Lincoln Heineman, the Towns Director of Finance. So, we do, as Melissa mentioned, I didn't hear all of it, but as Melissa mentioned, we do have two sets of unpaid bills from previous fiscal years. This is a standard, Article six is a standard, excuse me, article, annual article. Since state law requires town meeting approval for any prior year fiscal year, prior year fiscal, prior fiscal year bills for which appropriation is not available. So over the past couple of months, there have been two outstanding bills that have come up from fiscal year twenty twenty two and before that are legitimate and do need to be paid. One is for the mailing of real estate tax bills at the close of fiscal year twenty twenty two. From the town's previous printer mailer, the town had not, no one in the town had previously received this bill. That is for eight thousand nine hundred fifty two dollars and seventy five cents. And the other outstanding amount is a portion of what the United States Postal Service says is due since calendar year twenty seventeen and after, for three post office boxes that are used by the Treasure Collector's Office to collect payments. We, we have four post office boxes, for real estate and personal property bills, one for motor vehicle excise, one for water and sewer payments, and one for refuse payments. And throughout the time, since twenty seventeen, the town has been paying a post office box fee on time, regularly. But just in the last couple of months, the post office has come up and said that that is only covering one of these post office boxes and not the other three, so. It is, there is this outstanding set of bills. I'm in the process of negotiating that down, and I believe we'll be successful in negotiating some of that down with the postal service. But the sum total of those two sets of bills, I'd ask that town meeting approve a motion of not to exceed thirty eight thousand nine hundred fifty two dollars and seventy five cents for these two sets of bills, so. And I should note, the Advisory Committee did unanimously recommend approval of this article, so happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Okay, any questions from the select board?
I have a quick one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lincoln, so just so if I understand it, the, based on the math, the two, two post office boxes are costing us thirty grand?
So it's actually three, and.
Well, we already paid one though, right?
Right, so there are four total.
Oh, there's four, okay.
Yeah, there's four total, so this is three, since calendar year twenty seventeen, and that is the subject of the, what I believe will be successful negotiations in bringing these down, so. So, for example, the postal service is seeking to charge the current rates for, the, the current ongoing rates for past, you know, when the rates we know were lower back, for example, in twenty seventeen, so.
So they did, so they, this is from two thousand seventeen, they didn't bill us for these three boxes, they billed us for one?
We can find no record of any time that they ever billed us for these three, no, not, not since twenty seventeen.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
So this was way before your time, Lincoln, so.
It was.
How did it happen that we knew that we were renting four boxes? We only paid for one because that's the only one we were billed for, but we didn't notice that they made a mistake. Maybe there's no answer to that, but.
No, I mean, you know, the, the bill essentially says postal, postal boxes, and, you know, I think everyone in the Treasure Collector's Office since twenty seventeen assumed that that was covering all four. And, you know, it, it was not, according to the postal service.
Yeah. Mike, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think, and what happens with these things is, the bill comes in, and as Lincoln says, they just think, oh yeah, this is it, this is the bill. The box, the cost of boxes has gone up very substantially in the last several years, so. I can, I can understand why I wanted to try and negotiate this down, but my assumption is that it's the mailing that's the greater expense here. Is that correct?
No, it's, it's actually not true, so, on an ongoing basis, the mailing, mailing the bills is more expensive, but this was just one outstanding bill back.
Okay, all right, not the whole package, but.
Yeah, back from our old printer mailer, I should note, we use a less expensive and better printer mailer now, we've, we switched towards the end of calendar year twenty twenty two, so this is, this is just one bill back from June of twenty twenty two.
Okay, did you have a question, Paul?
No.
No, okay. This is a public hearing. Charlie, is there anyone in the Zoom public that would like to speak? There are two people in our audience, neither one of us raised their hand, so.
Okay, folks, if you heard before, you know the drill, please use the hand raise or Q and A feature to let us know that you'd like to make a comment at this public hearing, and we will promote you in Zoom so you can make a comment. So just raise, raise hand or use Q and A. Okay, Bernard, we have six attendees, and no one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to let us know they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, so I will close the hearing, and we will move on to a vote. Unless there are any final questions, I'd like to move approval of Warren Article six unpaid bills. On favor, please indicate by saying aye, and I assume no one objects to voting.
It's, it's up to, he's capping it though, right? It's up to an amount, not to exceed?
Yes, the request would be an amount not to exceed thirty eight thousand nine hundred fifty two dollars, seventy five cents.
Right, okay. On favor, Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, a big one, fiscal year twenty five budget. The Advisory Committee's budget. Okay, Melissa?
Good evening.
Take us through this long journey.
Well, we've been reviewing departmental budgets since the financial plan came out in mid-February, and we're with DPW's budget covered tonight, I think that's the last of the departments. Next week, we'll wrap up CIP and the unclassified budget, but in order to meet the timeline for the combined reports, we thought it would be good to have this public hearing. You'll be voting next week. In order to meet the deadlines for the combined reports, your last meeting next week will be your opportunity to wrap up any outstanding votes that you may have. So you have in your packet a number of items. The first is a memo from me, talking about the changes since the release of the financial plan, and so some of those things are, you know, the police contract and the, the impact of the police contract and the changes that we needed to adjust in order to fund the police contract. We had an adjustment for debt and interest based on the bond sale, we borrowed a little bit more for the fire station renovation project, so we needed to make some adjustments there. We had some group health adjustments, we had some, the GIC rates came out. And we have, with the finalized rates, there was a little bit of savings there. We previously discussed the use of free cash for OPEBs and redirecting half a million dollars instead of, to OPEBs, that we would use that to further support the stabilization fund. And then we also just recently discussed, yesterday actually, at the town school partnership, that we were looking to go for the house ways and means version of the budget, in order to provide a little bit of budgetary relief. The recommendation for the town side of those funds is for collective bargaining. Given the recent police contract, obviously, there are other areas in our bargaining cycle that are looking for additional support as well. I do have a PowerPoint that will help kind of bring us to where the Advisory Committee is, and hopefully kind of give you the update on all of the changes that are going there as well. Let me just share my screen. So, I think I kind of covered the first slide. You know, we have three hundred eighty nine million dollars of general fund appropriations. And I've already covered the changes that are on this first slide as well. There's been a lot of activity at the capital subcommittee, at the Advisory Committee, and so there are a lot of changes in the capital plan. The operating budget, some minor changes, but it's something that I think both Dennis and I feel that we can work through with the town administrator. So currently, just for the operating budget, they are slightly over, they voted some adjustments without identifying an offset. One of those is for the veterans budget, they were really stressing the importance of communicating with newer veterans and trying to do an outreach campaign for that, so they voted five thousand dollars in funding in order to have the Bill McGrode do additional outreach for veterans. I will say that Bill has also been engaged with Christina McCaff, who is our new communications officer, and they are already doing a lot of good work on kind of updating a lot of the information that Bill has for his outreach. Council on Aging, they voted additional funds to continue a program that's currently, the food program that is currently funded with ARPA. They did say that if the select board supported additional funding through a third round of ARPA allotments, that they would reconsider that. And then they also added some additional funding for fuel. We, we think that there's, you know, the, in terms of, you know, the staff assessment of what we potentially could put forward for another round of ARPA, we think that the Council on Aging Food Program is probably high on the priority list, and that very likely, we could, we could make the adjustments so that we wouldn't be that far out of balance with Advisory Committee. Capital Subcommittee has met on the CIP, they have voted on the CIP, but that is getting presented to the full advisory tomorrow night. So we'll know next week how the full advisory reacts to some of the recommendations that are in that, that vote. I have, the next slide will show you some of the reallocation that they're looking to do within the allotments that we have for CIP projects. They do have some additional restrictions that, that they wanna put on some projects, I have those also outlined for you as well. They did not vote on Griggs or Monmouth, they expressed some concerns on the the guidance that they are getting around the Butters, that are, whether or not they're allowed to participate in design review. And so they, they wanted to express that concern by holding the votes on these and, and hoping that maybe there could be an advisory or some way to sort out whether or not a Butters within three hundred feet of a project would be allowed to participate in design review, and I know that there's conflicting views on, you know, the bylaw and the intent of the bylaw, and then the state law. And they discussed some of that with town council last week, but we'll see how the full committee feels about wanting to move those projects forward.
Melissa, can I ask a quick question before you go past that slide?
Sure, sure.
So when you say no vote, they're, they're not saying they're, they're voting against Griggs and Monmouth, they're just saying they're not taking a vote, what is, what is it?
So they basically haven't voted to fund it yet, so I think the full advisory will have to decide whether or not they, they feel that they can make a recommendation on that one. These are the changes that they have recommended. As you know, we had a strong free cash certification combined with using three million dollars from the assessing overlay surplus to help support projects in the CIP. We've been hearing for a long time about the need for deferred maintenance funding, and in particular, from the Advisory Committee, we've been hearing a lot about school deferred maintenance. And so with the financial plan that came out, that's where we put a lot of the funding. Unfortunately, you know, there has been some questioning about the existing allotment for capital spending, and whether or not the original intent for town meeting has been honored in fiscal twenty four. And then the advisory has essentially made some decisions around further restricting those funds based on those conversations, and you have in your packet also a report from Carol Levin, who is the Chair of the Capital Subcommittee that further expresses some of the rationale behind some of these adjustments, and so you can see that there are three reductions for school projects, one point seven in the school rehab upgrade, two hundred thousand dollars in a new account that we were looking to fund for IEP accommodations, and then a request for a long-term capital plan for schools, and that. And that funding has been redistributed to the accounts that are listed above here. And all of these accounts obviously are ongoing, maintenance accounts for the most part in the CIP. So obviously, the, it's always, there's always a need for funding in these areas. And I think we'll just continue to engage with the capital subcommittee. I think that there's also some adjustments that I think the school department is still trying to advocate for. You just recently got in your inbox earlier this evening, and I believe Susan Givens is on this call. Some concerns expressed about some of the restrictions that the advisory committee is trying to place on the remaining amount, the 2.8 million, particularly around renovations for the Baldwin School. And we can, we can kind of go and cover that next.
Could you stop for a second, Melissa?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I just want to understand what I'm reading here. I apologize. So let's just take one of these line items. Energy man, town school energy management. The FY25 financial plan allocated 100,000. And the subcommittee increased it by 200,000 to a total of, how did they, maybe you don't know this. How did they determine that 200,000 additional dollars were needed above the 100,000 that staff had asked for?
So I think part of it was that they engaged with Charlie. You know, obviously, we can't give every department everything that they ask for. And so to the extent that the request is over what we, we think that the plan can afford, I think that those are the areas where they decided to put additional funding.
So are you, so let me see if I'm understanding what you just said. So essentially, Charlie had asked for $300,000. We gave him 100,000?
Yes.
Is that what that is? Is that what that means?
Yes.
Okay. I understand. I don't necessarily agree with it, but now I do understand.
Yeah, for some of the, for some of those accounts, that is the rationale. But as an example, for street rehab, the, you know, DPW didn't ask for an additional million dollars. They understood that the funding that we had available to support the program was coming from the override. But you obviously are very well aware of the outstanding backlog that, you know, this account could get millions of dollars and we still wouldn't be caught up. So, you know, that's another area that they, they felt that, you know, funding would be going to a, to a good place as well.
And just to add to that, right, you know, I think, right, the question to Charlie is not, you know, it's similar to the question that you asked, which is what would you do if you had infinite resources? And it's, well, we, this is how much it would cost, you know, to do, to do this kind of work. This is how much I think I could spend. But again, we deal with competing, competing requests and scarcity, and this is how we build the, build out the CIP, so.
I mean, and a big reason why the school rehab account got so much money in fiscal '25 was because of the feedback that I was getting from the advisory committee for the past two, three years at, at the very least.
What, what do you, could you maybe explain that a little bit further? What do you mean?
It, it's been a theme and part of departmental budget discussions for at least the past, you know, three to four years at the advisory committee about the underfunding in building maintenance, the list that had been put together of requests from the schools. I would say that, you know, this past summer, Susan and the school team has done a lot of really good work scrubbing that list and getting it to a number that they feel is probably more legitimate than it has been in years past. But it's still, it's still a pretty large underfunded area of the budget.
Okay. And I assume that there's a detailed report that explains the justification for each one of these numbers.
Yeah, so they have, you know, they have a, a list of the, the school rehab and, and what they're intending on doing with the funds. I think, you know, the intent that I was trying to get to was to, while we have the money, fund it and then it will take care of the future years. And so the school committee had only requested maybe about $2 million for fiscal '25. You know, giving them 4.6 million was intended to cover them for, you know, three, four years of the plan.
Okay, so you were front-loading it. So they asked for 2 million? Okay, I, I get it. That's helpful. I didn't notice that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, so there, it's, looking at this is very interesting because I had a call from a school committee member concerned about this and, and the school committee's perspective of this, on this was, well, they've taken $2 million out of our budget and put it elsewhere, $2 million out of our capital budget and put it elsewhere. What you're saying, it, it sounds to me like what you're saying is that for the current year's upgrades at the Baldwin School, which is that small building on the top of the hill at, at, at He Street. The school committee had actually originally asked for $2 million and some change, two and a half?
So when we go into the conditions of appropriation, we can talk about what, what the issue is with Baldwin. So Baldwin has a little bit of a longer history in that, you know, they had requested funding for a larger scale renovation somewhere around nine to 11 million a couple of years ago. That was put in future years of the CIP to kind of signal like, what are we doing with this building? Let's talk about this. And then there really wasn't a lot of discussion around it, so the funding didn't get pulled forward. At the same time, the school committee was engaged in a discussion on the leases and decided to end the lease at Clark Road. But there wasn't a funding plan on how to deal with that. And so they used their school rehab money in fiscal '24 to start to outfit Clark Baldwin to get it ready to accommodate the, the Clark Road, the people that were working at, at Clark Road. And I think that the advisory committee took exception to that, given that that wasn't part of the conversation around the million dollars that was allocated in fiscal '24. And so I think that's part of the reason why they're reducing funding in fiscal '25 and trying to put additional conditions on the, on the funding that is provided. So, but we'll go through that when we do the conditions of appropriation that they currently have on projects.
Okay, and of course, Clark Road has been the subject of some tugging and hauling between the advisory committee and the school department. For some time, it was carried as a capital item and so, and, and it should have been an operating item, but that's another whole story. Okay, but, but the, and the upshot is, one, one of the comments that, that I got was that we're, that the school is by law required to make the modifications for IEPs, for students who have an IEP. And I have no insight into that except to hear what somebody says about it, and, and that's been cut to zero. And I, you know, be interested in having the advisory committee explain that in some detail as to why they're doing that.
Yeah, I can't remember if some of that rationale is in Carol's report, but I will say that, you know, that work currently is being done in the operating budget. And I think there was a request to fund it in the, in the capital plan instead. And so I think it's a question of, you know, whether or not it's appropriate to have it in the operating budget or whether or not it should be in the capital.
But then it'd be put into the operating budget as not just cut. It should be moved from one bucket to the other rather than taken out of the bucket altogether.
The justification is in, on page 794 of your packet, and this was part of their, the capital subcommittee memo. And what they say is the modifications to the building, historically, all IEP modifications were made from other operating funds. These modifications to the building are specific to an individual student and may require restoration to the original building conditions when the student leaves the school. In addition, modifications to a handicap bathroom to have, to accommodate a specific student have, in some instances, rendered the bathroom non-handicapped accessible. So that's their, that's the justification for why that's.
Give me that page number again, because I'm not seeing that in the packet.
794.
You may not want to read it, apparently, what I just heard.
Well, I do want to read it because I, this is.
No, I'm kidding. I was making a joke. So I, I just, Mike, are you all set? Can I?
Well, I haven't got the, I haven't got the packet, packet.
Okay.
So I'm, I, I just think, when I look at this, I think, well, we have to see what comes out of the advisory committee as a whole, but I'm, I'm not quite comfortable with what I'm hearing about the IEP part of it, any kind of answer, and I, I just don't know about the rehab part.
Well, that's, that's, I, I had, is it okay, Bernard?
Yeah, go ahead.
Question, sorry. I just wanted to, want, really clarify this one point, Melissa. I want to make sure I understand it. The, the line item, which is school rehab slash upgrade of 4. something, 7 million. What I heard you say is you front-loaded that line item. It's a multi-year budget right there.
Yes, these are all continuing appropriations, so they can spend it over more than one year.
I completely understand that. If, do we, and what, what is the number for FY25 if you didn't, you know, add some additional for future years?
Sure, if you just give me a minute, I can look up the, actually, I'll do that on my phone and keep this up. So if you just give me a minute.
Yeah, that was, I think you mentioned something like 2.4, 2.7, something in that order.
Is it, yeah, around $2 million, but I think it's.
We have, we have a 2.120?
Thank you. Is that, that should be in the school committee.
That's how, Helen just said it's.
75, yes.
Got, okay, okay. So if we, and again, I'm not saying I agree with this. I'm just trying to understand. If the FY financial plan funded projects for FY25, that number would be for 2120675?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and I know that street rehab, because as you're right, I've spent a lot of time at street rehab trying to get additional money. I do know that there's, you know, there's a front-loading that would be great, but there is a, an extent to how much they can actually spend in FY25.
And I think both accounts is the same thing. They only have a finite amount of time to get the school work done. So if anything, the pressure there to get, you know, to get bids in hand and projects accomplished is even, even tighter.
Yeah, I mean, these, my, you know, my view is it may be perfectly right to see some of these other items get fully funded, like energy management systems. We're concerned about energy management if that 300,000 is going to be implemented and needed to put the complete system in. The, the other items, you know, IEP accommodations, we're going to zero. Yeah, that's, I really would like to better understand the logic there, so. Anyway, that's my initial, my initial sense. I just need, I'm hoping that maybe when they do finally get this cleared up at advisory, maybe one of them would come and talk with us when we vote on this as opposed to try to read the tea leaves in a report. Maybe we could have a conversation with a, a person from the, from the advisory committee. Some of these are pretty significant changes.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's why, you know, I was, I, I talked with, with Carol and I said, you know, I don't know how the board is going to react when they see all of this. So at the very least, I need your report. And I, you know, I think it was just too short notice to try and get her here. But I think after the advisory committee meets, you know, maybe Dennis and I can talk about, you know, potential coverage or, or kind of a way to present their sentiment on, on how they eventually will vote. If we can go through.
I'm sorry, Melissa, go ahead.
No, 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 it's, I wasn't sure if you were ready to move on. If not, we can keep going.
Well, I'm not. So I, I think we're very useful to have a discussion with the subcommittee, which is the capital subcommittee, before this goes to the full advisory committee. Because once the advisory committee does it, and then have back and forth, it gets very cumbersome. There are 30 of them.
They're, they're, they're taking this up tomorrow night, Mike?
Uh, that's too bad. All right.
Yeah, it is too bad. Either way, you know, it would be helpful, really helpful to have Carol or someone from the subcommittee come and walk us through the logic as opposed to being asked to just read a report. Because the risk here is that there's going to be two motions, there's going to be two motions at town meeting. If there's not, if there's not some consensus here. This, this, this is a dramatic, these are dramatic changes to, to, to the CIP, which may be perfectly well and good, but it would be helpful to have it be more collaborative than, than what I'm currently seeing.
Yeah.
But I'm sure it'll get worked out.
Well, I guess the, if you, if the message, Melissa, if you're conveying the message back to the subcommittee, it's, what are you guys doing? It's the message, and we'd like to know a little bit more about this.
Well, and I also think that, you know, some of the restrictions, I think we have some concerns over that as well, so why don't we go into that as well? So there, there are also conditions on some of these appropriations that I, I think are still kind of ongoing topics of conversation, and my screen is currently frozen. So if you give me a minute, I think my remote just kicked, just, hold on. I think I need to restart my remote.
And as, I guess, while you're waiting for some reboot there, Bernard, as we go into our planning process for next year, I know you're, you're going to, we kick us off. You plan to kick us off in a more thoughtful, you know, objectives-oriented way. It would be, if, if, to prevent this next year, it would be good to see some collaboration between the capital subcommittee. I don't know if that's happened before, but this.
This is a rare event.
This seems like a big surprise.
Melissa, I think part of the issue is that with free cash being certified so late in the year, normally we have a preliminary CIP that comes out in December. And then there's an opportunity for some feedback before we actually have the final financial plan. You know, I have recommended to the advisory committee that they, they had scheduled a meeting for after the, you know, the board is going to have a forecast presentation and hopefully a preliminary CIP in mid-December. You'll have your retreat, and I recommend to the advisory committee that they meet two days after that so that we can kind of dive into that with them. And hopefully that will, you know, provide that, that area of feedback that we need, you know, because we don't, we don't like these surprises either. So, you know, I, I think that there, there definitely is an opportunity to get a little bit more information from them on, on what they're looking to see and any issues that they, that they have with, with the capital plan.
Essentially, they're rewriting the CIP a few weeks before town meeting. It's just, it's, again, it might be, you know, it might make a lot of sense what's being done, but it, it's, it doesn't seem like a real, a great practice to, to be doing this at this time. That's just my, my view. But again, these may make the absolute right sense and they did their due diligence and, and, and there's a rationale for these things. It's just, it seems to be, it seems to be a lot.
Okay, let's move on to restrictions on appropriations.
Sure. So the first is, we have 3.3 million going towards Lars Anderson. Oh, I see my mic's hands raised.
I'm sorry, but in the Q and A, Susan Givens is being, is asking to be able to speak.
Yep, I have. So Susan, when we get to the conditions of appropriations around school rehab, I think that would be a great time to have her kind of provide some more context to the memo that she sent earlier today, which is just another two slides. So the, the first one is on Lars. So they have some additional restrictions that they'd like to put on the, the monies for the, the renovation work at Lars to essentially ask that the preservation commission weigh in on the plans for that site. This is not required in the general bylaws. This is not required by state law. I, I think that the department would probably acknowledge that there could be better coordination. Whether or not that needs to be hardcoded into a condition of appropriation, I, I think is still up for debate. And so that's probably part of what we'll talk about tomorrow night as well.
Can I, can I ask a question about that, Melissa or Chad? Has, has the preservation commission ever been involved in any work that's been done at Lars Anderson?
I, I, I mean, my institutional memory doesn't go back very far, so I'm, I'm not aware. You know, preservation does have a role to play in buildings that are designated historically, you know, where the preservation, there is, there are general, like, very severe preservation restrictions on Lars Anderson to begin with. But that doesn't necessarily invoke the preservation commission's jurisdiction.
So for example, is, is the existing skating pavilion, is that designated a historic structure?
No.
What about the Doratzero?
Yeah, I think there are some, I think there are some, so my, my understanding is that the skating, the skating rink is not a historic structure. It's not so designated, but there are other parts of it. But again, I, I would need to check with the Parks and Open Space Director and get a full understanding of that. Because it's my understanding that the, the interplay of what's a historic, you know, the park itself is a historically, is designated historically significant. I think it's at the, it's a, it has a federal designation of being historically significant. But that doesn't necessarily, again, invoke the preservation commission's jurisdiction in every instance.
Okay, Melissa will come up next.
Okay, so the next, the next piece, I think it would be good if Susan were promoted. So for the allocation of school repair maintenance, the advisory committee is trying to segregate each of the areas for renovation into its own kind of category. So 1.4 million on the Lincoln School, 200,000. 1.4 million dollars on the Lincoln School, 250 on the Hayes School. So generally, the way that these appropriations are written is it, it's very general and allows for the flexibility for Charlie to spend in, in whatever schools he, you know, deems where the work is necessary. And so this would kind of restrict that. In addition, the, the language around the Baldwin School is at the bottom here and it's highlighted in yellow. You know, it's very specific about where the work can be done and also has a requirement for the, the preservation commission to weigh in here as well.
And what is justification for the preservation commission here?
I think there are some concerns about the building and whether or not the work would comply with preserving the historic character of the building, but.
This is interior work, isn't it?
We, we actually, we, we did some preliminary analysis here. We don't think the building falls under the preservation commission's jurisdiction.
Okay. Have we communicated that to the advisory committee?
Yes.
And do they respond?
You can see the response.
Well, and I think the, the other issue here too is that they are looking to have an MOU between the town and the, of the schools around the use of the Baldwin School, but the Baldwin School is under the care and custody of the school committee. And so I've already talked to town council about whether or not we can require this, and it doesn't seem that we would be able to. So that's another issue. I don't know if Susan's been promoted, but she should be.
So if we, if we agree that the school should not be subject to, for example, the preservation committee's, you know, monitoring, wha- what, what are our options?
So there have been years in the past when the board and the, and the advisory committee are not aligned, where there would be separate motions for particular items. And so there could be an issue where we would have an amendment to the advisory committee motion in order to take the language away.
Can I make a, make a comment?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mike.
Yeah, so what we're supposed to be doing as, as, you know, what a volunteer board does, or for that matter, the select board, whether even, you know, despite the fact that we have a, a stipend, we're not totally volunteers. But what we're supposed to be doing is setting policy. And okay, the advisory committee goes beyond that certainly, and they, they create the budget, but to get down into the nitty gritty of how, how many is allocated between specific projects is a really, an inappropriate thing for the, for the AC to be doing. And I wonder whether, you know, how do we make that case to them? Does it make sense for one of us to show up at the meeting and ask to make a comment? Do we put that in a note to, to the chair? What, what should we be doing here in order to say? Of course, I'm speaking only for myself here. No, this isn't, this is not what you're supposed to be doing.
Well, I think that's where the feedback from the school department on the practicality of, of being able to adhere to these conditions. And that's why, that's why Susan and the memo that was sent earlier today has also been provided to the advisory committee. And Susan, if there's any feedback you want to give the board, I think that would be helpful as well.
Right, but be, to be, to be realistic, Susan is kind, is going there as a spokesperson for the school department. That's who she works for. We're the select board, and if we have something to say about this, I'd like to find a way to say it. So Bernard, any, any thoughts or is this, should?
That was my question also.
I mean, I, I think, I think, you know, I would, I would say even as, you know, last year, for example, the, the, the board and the advisory committee were out of alignment pretty much until the night of the budget, you know, right? Or the night before the budget came up. And it was through the arduous, but you know, effective process of realizing that the bodies wanted to come to consensus, that a consensus was ultimately reached. I mean, you were literally meeting in one classroom of the high school and they were meeting in the one across the hallway.
But this is, Jazz, this is a different level of disconnect.
Yes.
There's, there's budgetary disconnect where you want to allocate, you know, 40 grand to the council on aging, to help with transportation and you know, there's, there, that's a level of budgetary disconnect. This is, this is, they're getting into operational micromanagement of, of the CIP, which is, this last one highlighted. Imagine if that was done in, in other parts of the CIP. Playgrounds, you can spend this amount of money on the play structure, this amount of money on, on the green space. If you go plus or minus X percent, you need to go seek approval. This is not the level of, of oversight that we need. And I think it's wholly inappropriate. And I, I, I'm, I'm prepared this evening to have us draft a memo from the board and tell them that. I think that they've way stepped over their bounds on some of this stuff. There's, there's nothing wrong with providing guidance and recommendations to have more budgetary control and transparency. But to put that into this level of micromanagement in the CIP is wholly inappropriate, and we should communicate that to this, to the AC. And frankly, I'd be prepared to go with two motions to town meeting, because I think that this is a terrible precedent.
Yeah, I, I concur.
Well, I think we, the full, the full committee still needs to vote. So I think that some of that feedback will be received tomorrow night. You know, and, and we'll see, we'll see how the full committee feels about this language as well.
Well, I think this goes, this goes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're a spokesperson when you go to the, to the advisory committee to a certain extent, without laying the burden saying it's your opinion, please do convey to them that it's the opinion of the, the people sitting here, three of us, is that this is, this is not on. This particular part is certainly not on, and then we have some questions.
Mike, Mike, could you speak closer to the mic? I, I can't really.
I'm saying, I'm asking Melissa to convey to the advisory committee that she's just the messenger, not to kill her. But that the, the select board is really unhappy with this.
And I think on our, our, our end, just to the point that you've raised about the budgetary process, starting earlier, providing more clarity, all of that is important for us to work on. You know, to remember not only in this moment, but for the summer, when we start, you know, working on FY 26 to provide. I think the advisory committee really needs guidance from, you know, they're separately an elected body, they're independent, but I think what they crave is a, a sense of where they fit in the process, you know, what is and isn't acceptable and.
They don't have operational oversight. Period. This is operational oversight. This is operational control of, of, of the CIP. It's just inappropriate.
Right, the question of, we're right, the question where that, the question where that line is, because you know, their, their powers are broad under the statute, and I think we, you know, I, I try and be respectful of that, but I, you know, I, I, I have concerns when, you know, there's a potential pending motion to move a position from one department to another, like that's not to put a too fine a point on it, but that's my job. You know, I don't, I, I value the advisory committee's input on these sorts of things, but the day-to-day operational responsibilities of departments is my job. And I, I want us, I want us to be very respectful of their, you know, there's a huge amount of expertise and institutional knowledge on that committee, and we need to listen to them. But I need to, there, there needs to be clear lines in terms of where operational control is.
Yeah, and I wonder what's really behind these, these proposals, so. Susan Givens, we're gonna get open, a hearing. We've opened the hearing soon, but Susan Givens?
Okay, yeah. Can I speak? Can you hear me?
Yes, of course you can.
Okay, great. Well, this is my first opportunity to meet some of you, so thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and for your support in relation to the CIP proposal from the advisory committee. You'd asked several questions tonight, and I'd like to be able to answer them for you to the extent that I can. I wanted to clarify a little bit the request for the IEP accommodation fund. The reason we brought that forward is because we ran into a situation at the end of last year, as I was coming on board, where we had a facility-related modification that had to be made to comply with an IEP that costs $35,000. We don't budget on the school side for facility-related modifications like that. And so we had to transfer money over to those, the town side in order to be able to do this. But we didn't have an appropriation set aside in the schools to be able to address this need. And it happens from time to time that these come up. Another example, student comes to us and has some sensory issues. We were required to modify the building to modi- moderate the temperature in the, in the school. Sometimes kids have hearing challenges, and then we have to put some kind of noise-reducing systems or amplification systems in the classrooms. And these aren't things that we budget on our side. What we do budget for are support services, staffing for teachers and, and curriculum, things along those lines, but we don't put money in our budget for facility modifications. And because it can be quite costly, we, we thought that it would be prudent to set aside in a fund like you do for ADA accommodations, a certain amount of money so that when those things arise, we are able to access it. Because there was no money in the facility budget and we still would have had to do those modifications. So we just were, were trying to address a very specific situation that arises without having to put set-asides within our operating budget to accommodate these, because they don't happen all the time. So we asked for $50,000. We know that in the past, you put aside a certain amount of money each year for things like ADA. And this is a real, true need on the school side. And we thought that this might be an opportunity to bring that issue forward and have you consider it. So that is what the IEP request is for. We don't budget for it in our operating budget. It's something that we have to come up with, and we don't have reserve funds in the same way that perhaps other areas and, and departments have. So, I mean, we can, of course, put set-asides within our budget. We just don't do that right now if that is, if that's the wish of, of the community. We just thought this might be a better vehicle for that. So are there any other questions? Maybe I could answer around the?
Yeah, I, I actually do have a, a question on the IEP. Thank you, Susan, for that, that explanation. So the I, I assume that advisory, if I'm gonna put my advisory hat on, that their issue with this is that it's not a permanent, it's not a permanent upgrade, right? It's not a permanent improvement. Sounds like it's specific to an individual, if it's noise dampening systems, that, 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 that modification may not remain in place, actually may move with the student to another school. Is that potentially what is, what is going, I, I forget, I'm just, that's a classification, but are these temporary, are these temporary changes or are they permanent changes to the building?
For the most part, permanent, though as a student moves through, their cohort moves up and this moves and advances through their education, we may need to make further modifications. But once we're aware of the IEP, then we can plan for it, right? We have a conversation with Charlie, we have this coming up, and then it can be built into the building budget request. But when these things happen, it, these aren't always things that we have advanced notice about. So the modification, for example, to the safe room, you know, costs $35,000, and that's a significant amount of money that's modifying the actual building. And, and even though the student will advance, the space remains.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to build on this, because it's an interesting question, Susan. If we can't accommodate a student who needs a space like this, an IEP says we need this and we can't build it for them, we have to put them in a private placement at public expense. Is that correct? Is that generally correct?
Well, we, we can get fined. We, we, you know, in this particular case, we, we were out of compliance and and so we wound up in a litigious situation and, and we had to take action to resolve. So if we couldn't accommodate, I mean, certainly, I don't, I can't speak to this, this particular.
I wanted to speak into a specific, in general, if we can't, if, if the school system can't accommodate someone's IEP, the remedy under the law is that they get placed at a private placement that can accommodate it at public expense. Is that generally fair to say?
We, we would need to be able to provide an accommodation for the student one way or another, either within our school facilities, and if we can't, you know, we'd have to work with the parents to find an appropriate placement.
Right, and in some situations, that can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars a year per student. And isn't that a major driver of costs, is our, is, is the cost of, of out-of-district placements?
Yes, when we can't accommodate students within our school district, then yeah, out-of-district placements tend to be more expensive. Kids are going to a more specialized program that may be more appropriate for them than what we can provide them within the four walls of our schools here, so.
So if we can invest in the infrastructure to accommodate these students' IEPs, we may actually be able to drive down the cost of provi- providing special education to the students who really need it theoretically, right? By being able to provide these capital improvements. If they allow us to then provide the student with a free and appropriate public education, there wouldn't be a need to send that student to a private placement.
Right, and not even just for that student, because once you have the capacity within the school system, which we do, we have some district-wide programs where we, we have students throughout the town attend specific schools because of the the, our ability to provide the services to them in, in that particular site. So we do try to, to leverage these improvements and take advantage of the investment. But if we don't have the investment, then we can't do that.
Sure, I would just kind of, I need to flag for a second, because Mike put this up. Mike has to leave where he currently is. You do have, you don't have to take votes on the articles tonight. But you do, you might want to take votes on the board and commission appointments. Do you want to table this item briefly so that Mike can vote, and then he doesn't rush home?
If you don't mind, I'd like to just make one comment on what Susan said, just to round out what she said and what you said, Jazz. The, I think, I believe I'm correct in saying that the average cost of a, of an outplace student is, is north of $100,000. So to make a small change in, in accommodations, physical accommodations in the schools is just, you know, the, there's just no comparison from an economic perspective, never mind from an educational perspective.
Hundred thousand plus per year, too, so.
If transportation is involved, it's, it could be more, yeah.
Yeah, I say, north of 100,000.
Okay, so let's, let's go to the boards and commission appointments, following candidates. I'm sorry, someone said something?
We're gonna return, we're gonna return to this matter. So we're just tabling this for, we're tabling it for a second. Sure, no, it's okay. We're, we're tabling this for a second. We will return and open a public hearing on the matter. We're just making sure that, to get the vote in before Mike goes. Thank you.
Okay, boards and commissions, appointments, following candidates for appointment, reappointment to the boards and commissions as follows. Small Business Development Committee, I assume that's Christopher Moody, who we interviewed earlier today. Anyone have any comments before we vote? Yeah, I'm over approval of Christopher Moody to the Small Business Development Committee. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, let's go back to.
So you also have, you also have Arissa Boit, who's be, who's currently associate member. And this, the current iteration of this board did interview previously, so we did not ask to recall for a second interview, because you were all present for the initial interview. So if that's okay with you.
Yeah. I assume no, no question. Okay, and she's being upgraded from associate member to full member of the preservation commission.
Correct.
Okay, so on favor of Arissa Boit, please indicate by saying aye. Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
The last vote you have on your agenda is the vote on Article 18, which the petitioner withdrew. However, because that article is still on the warrant, it does require you to take a vote. That's on the social wealth study. Theoretically, anyone could move it, and it's on the warrant, the fact that the petitioner is not.
Okay, I'm more of no action on one Article 18. Which I assume is agreeable with everyone. Okay, on favor, please indicate by saying aye. Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
All right.
Okay, so we withdrew that, that's.
Okay, so I'm gonna be kicked out of here in about five minutes, but I appreciate that. Thank you, Jazz.
Okay, let's resume the hearing on one Article 10, the. Okay, let's resume the hearing on one Article 10, the budget amendment. One article, Susan, were you gonna, did you have more to say?
Um, I, we did provide you with a memo with some information regarding the other CIP. I think you've covered it pretty well tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions, you know, particularly around Baldwin. You know, we do have to have a place to move, you know, this this staff once, once the Clark Road lease expires. And we're on task to be able to complete the work at Baldwin in time to move our staff over there by the end of this year before summer recess begins. So the work is essential. We're not modifying in any significant way. It's it's some work, you know, related to HVAC and electrical and plumbing. We certainly need to have some upgrades there and then flooring and some painting. There isn't any really significant modifications being done and none being done on the outside of the building. We, Charlie was in the process of of adding a Lula so that we would have handicap accessibilities between the floors. And, you know, we had to move forward in the wintertime with some of those upgrades. Otherwise, the space wouldn't be ready for the for the staff members to move into in time for the Clark Road lease. So we had talked about this quite openly since the summer. And I know that Carol did attend some of our meetings, in fact, made some comments asking about parking. So, you know, I guess I'm, I was a little surprised to hear that they were taken by surprise since since there had been some conversation. I think important to the process is is being able to reflect on things that go well and things that maybe don't go as well as you would like. And then have the opportunity to have a dialogue about how can we improve process. The idea that you know, we we have these staff members that need to move someplace, but there's a desire to not allow us to complete the work. You know, it doesn't feel like the right approach to take in this case. So, you know, I wanted to certainly make you aware of, you know, that there's been a lot of work, a lot of communication, a lot of collaboration between the town departments and the school department to ready the space for for school purposes. And we really would just would appreciate your support and and helping us to finish this out so that we can have a smooth and orderly transition and be ready to open the school year in September. So, you know, there was no nefarious motivations. We're trying to meet the outcomes, be responsible and do things in a timely fashion when there's when there's capacity to do so, so.
Okay, and we appreciate that and and we'd rather spend this money at Baldwin than 1.6 million again. Is it 1.6 million or?
1.2.
At at 1.2 at Clark Road.
I have a question.
Something over a million.
Yes, it's, we'll we'll be saving over 1.2 million dollars.
Okay, and Chaz, you said that we have clarification that this is not subject to Preservation Committee.
We don't believe this, we don't believe this work triggers the triggers the Preservation Commission's jurisdiction, no.
Is there some way to communicate that to advisory?
We can do our best.
Okay.
I have a question, Bernard.
Yes.
I just, it would be helpful to get an understanding of the the modifications that you're making to Baldwin, just a high level scope and what the budget is for that. And then what advisory is suggesting that they they suggested to you what they're doing? What are they cutting? They're cutting money, which I assume is cutting scope and what would be the impact? If you could, without spending too much time, but give just an overview of the project and where it's at and what the impact is if these cuts are made.
I I'm not entirely clear myself what they're cutting specifically. But I do, I I have heard and have read that they don't want us to do any work on the lower level, that the Lula lift that would allow us to be handicap accessible on both floors is something that they're not supportive of. Helen, I think, is there and was in attendance at the more recent meetings and the walkthroughs. So she might be able to provide a little more insight into their thinking around that. But but I don't have any more information about their think on the part of.
I'm not asking you, I was asking, Helen, can you just give an overview of what's being done there? Yep, yep, does that go over there? Is that okay, Bernard?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Helen Charlopski. I'm on the school committee and chair of the capital subcommittee of the school committee. So I'm speaking from that perspective, probably also.
As one of our experts.
As one of your experts, who has been at Baldwin many times. We went there to the, start back two steps. Advisory wanted a tour of the building and so I gave it to them. That was last week, maybe two weeks ago. And in that, they they originally were very upset that we were doing anything. You asked what we were planning on doing. We're doing flooring, well, actually, it's exactly what Susan had said. We're doing flooring, we're doing painting, we're doing doing some small renovations in terms of making some offices be private because we have classrooms there and so some of them are being made into two offices or something like that. The lighting needed improvement, those sorts of things. It's basically.
And what was, what's the total budget for that?
Total budget was, Susan, do you have that 780,000 or something along those lines? 780,000.
And what is the adjustment that's been?
And so we've, we actually used money from last year, 300,000 or 200, how much you?
We used 82 from last year's money to cover this 185, so we're looking.
And then they only want to give us 180 more.
To finish it?
To finish it.
And how much?
They took out the Lula. I do know they took out the Lula, which is, I think, how much is the Lula? About 150, maybe.
And that's not for kids, that's for staff, right?
Yeah, for staff, it's it's.
But still.
The building itself is handicapped accessible through the outside, not through the inside. So if you, you know, needed, if you were in a wheelchair, you would need to come, go from the top floor outside and then down to the bottom floor. That's the bathroom.
Essentially, okay, so essentially they're cutting out, Helen, they're cutting out, they cut money for the Lula, is that what you called it?
Right.
That's what they cut out.
And the whole first floor.
The basement of the first?
Well, it's the garden level.
Okay, what and what and what's in the lower level that?
So there's a big, there's one big space that that we were going to make into two spaces.
Okay.
And a gym that we were going to use for a resource center. For, so those were the, and, you know, the equip, the heating and other stuff is down there on that floor. But that's, it's basically, and a bathroom.
And if you know, if that, if the changes aren't made to the first floor, what's the implications of that?
Then we can't, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, so let me explain.
We'll do a tag team here.
Yeah, so part of our strategic plan includes creating a learning center for staff. As you know, there is this significant labor shortage problem that we have in education and finding staff and retaining staff is a real challenge for all of us. So one of the things that we have in our strategic plan is to develop a comprehensive program for all levels of staff to to help develop their skills as part of their growth and development over their career arc. And so we need a space in order to offer courses as well as our mentoring and induction program to have a location where we can have staff work collaboratively on on project development, curriculum development and advancing their their skills.
This is, you're building meeting and training space?
Exactly.
Okay, and does that?
And the top floor is all office space. Yeah.
And it does that, does that type of space exist anywhere within the system today?
No. It doesn't.
Okay, let's move on.
So, so in order to use Baldwin, one of the zoning requirements is that you have to have an educational purpose. We have our curriculum coordinators moving there as well. One of the spaces would be used for a resource library. And then we would have, you know, our curriculum coordinators that can work with new teachers, provide some professional development and supports there as well as keep curriculum resources there and available for staff to use. So that's what the downstairs area was going to be designed for. And we, you know, it's not significant modifications to that that area. In fact, there is a wall that was added in order to make it into two separate classrooms when it was used as a early childhood center a number of years ago. And so we were just going to kind of make some updates to the space there so that we could just convert it to two, two areas that we could use for professional development and a learning, a nice learning environment for our our use. So that's the area they're saying now that we wouldn't be able to move forward with. Now, there is a bathroom down there. We were also going to have the staff break room down in that area as well. And so modifications have already begun on the the bathrooms down there to get them ready so that we can have adequate number of of facilities for the occupants that would be there. So that's, that's what the first floor is. And the Lula would allow people to move between the two floors because otherwise you'd have to go outside of the building, out out the lower level door and around and up the hill and into the front door, which, you know, we we didn't think was, you know, a perfect way to to address the ADA needs for folks that would be in there. Also, the basement level is used as a, an evacuation site, we learned, for the Sewell Center. So in cases where we would have staff upstairs, the 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 students that are, the children that are in that program there, should they need to evacuate, would be evacuating into the lower level. So we'd certainly want to make it appropriately safe for those reasons as well.
Okay, thank you, Helen.
Okay.
Hold, hold, hold on, Regina.
Say one thing, thank you for your support.
Oh, of course, okay. Okay, unless anyone has any further questions, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open it up to public comment. Charlie, is there anyone on the Zoom audience? So we have one person in the audience who would like to speak first, so.
Well, maybe you should have them go while we let folks have an opportunity to to raise their hand or use the Q and A feature to let us know you'd like to make a comment. So folks in chat, follow those instructions.
Right, hey, Regina, it's your turn now.
Thank you, Regina Prawley from Precinct 16. I did attend the subcommittee at length on this discussion. And they just didn't feel that there was a stability for the future of Baldwin. As you know, some of you might know, historically, it's been up in the air. It's news for the staff to use it for their babysitting, that kind of thing that the town provides, the material program. At any rate, it's not quite fair to say that it's micromanaging. They were going to vote the whole thing down because they don't care for it being used for staff training. They are concerned about the growth in South Brookline of the Hancock Village and they, there are currently classrooms in that building. It was always a a school. So they just, they did compromise on the, what you call, micromanaging. They decided that no matter what the future of Baldwin holds, it would need electrical upgrades. So they voted, to my memory, voted exclusively for the electrical upgrade, which I think is responsible, given the direction we're going to through. But they didn't approve the Lula, they didn't approve anything that they felt was up in the air as to how it could be used when the need might arise for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, anyone else?
Okay, we have nine attendees and no one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close the hearing and let's see, where do we go from here?
One more Warren article for a public hearing. There's no need for a vote currently on this. You have a quorum.
We we do want to sort of direct you and Melissa.
I think we 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 heard the message when Mike was here that you'd like a memo of some kind. So we will draft something to that effect and circulate it to the board. Obviously, the problem is you can't act until next week, but we will have a draft for you.
I want to get the process moving.
Right, and I want to be clear about what my feedback is. My feedback is when I say micromanagement, when we're getting into small amounts of money, 15, 20,000 dollars and it's, they've they've broken a request into multiple line items with appropriations, that's, that's very, very specific level of 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 guidance, which we haven't had before. I think there's a valid conversation to have about these numbers, whether increasing HVAC up, you know, that may be completely appropriate if that's, if that is the best way to use that money for that project at that time. And if we're front loading, you know, building maintenance to the tune of maybe 3 million dollars or 2 and a half million dollars, I can understand why someone might want to reallocate those to a near term need like fixing roads and sidewalks, as you know. So I'm I'm less, I'm not, I'm less concerned about the numbers and the movement of numbers. We always do that, but the level of detail on the, how the money is being appropriated is very, very specific.
Okay, so we'll move on to Article 17, police details. Who do we have? Is Chief Pastor still here for that?
Yes, Chief Pastor.
Thank you, Ellen.
On and President Emilia as well. I had sent them back to the attendees, but I'm promoting them again now.
Well, again, Chief Pastor. So Warren Article 17, police details. Sounds interesting, but not very controversial, or maybe it is, I don't know.
I hope it's not, no. This article petition, the purpose of it is to allow me, with the approval of the town administrator, to appoint retired police officers for the purpose of doing police detail work and to have police powers related to doing that detail work. A retired police officer appointed under the provisions, you know, that we're asking for, will be somebody that's not been retired for more than five years. That's to be compliant with the MPTC requirements that any, any officer who's been separated from the department for more than five years is required to go back to the police academy. And that's not what we're asking for here. So it's people who have retired within five years. It will be allowed to work details if they have retired under superannuation. They will be required to keep up with all of the required training, including CPR, firearms training, anything that's required under post and MPTC. And will extend their age of eligibility up to the age of 70. And I'm happy, I mean, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read through, but that's basically.
So if I take it as a, on the details, they would not have the authority to to carry a firearm that they get as a regular police officer, but would have to be separately licensed?
So they would actually have police powers and they would be, maintain their department issued equipment. They're required to train on that. And there are officer safety reasons to keep the equipment consistent with what our officers are carrying on the street.
Got it. Paul?
Yep, thank you, Chief. Two questions. The first is, are we limiting the retired police officers to retired from the Brookline Police Department? Or is it any, any retired officer, it could be a Boston cop, a Cambridge?
That's a great question. I don't think it's been asked before, but yes, the intent to limit it to police officers retired from Brookline PD.
Okay, we may want to get specific about that if that's, specify that. And then I follow on to Bernard's question. So if there. So if they're retired, they're not active duty. If they're on a detail, they would become active duty and have all the, you know, power responsibilities and duties of an active police officer. So if there was a crime, they could then go, you know, investigate that situation and have the full powers of an active officer?
That's exactly right. And to, it has to be tied to their performance of their duties as a, a special officer. That's, they'll be appointed special police officers in order to do detail. So as long as they're acting within the scope of, you know, the assignment that they're hired for. For example, you know, if somebody's doing a detail in front of CVS where there's, you know, a robbery that's just occurred, they would be, they would be able to make that arrest for a robbery, for example.
Okay, so they would be given, they're giving a special, they're given a special designation.
That's right.
They're sworn in as a special designation, is it, would they go through that whole process?
Yep, that's another good question. I do believe they are sworn in as special police officers.
If there was an issue, let's say that something happened, is the town covered, we're liable for? Just as if they were sworn in full-time officer?
Yes. They're, they're acting as agents of the town, so yes.
Okay.
And I assume they'd get the training of, of regular police officers, particularly as updated by the post commission stature?
That's correct. They will be required to keep up with all required trainings. However, they won't be paid overtime or compensated by the department. It's entirely on them, you know, to keep up with that training on their own time. We're looking at it as a, as a privilege.
Yeah, and of course, they, they would have to be certified under post.
That's correct.
I, I assume that, but I think it's important for our vast TV audience to know that.
So Chad, is this, these two specific things about being kind of sworn in as a special type of, whatever the designation is and what Bernard had just stated, are these things that would be built into the article? Or is that more policy and procedure already?
Policy and procedure. And, and this is, this is a, as, as we've, as other communities have been looking for ways to ensure that details are fully staffed, this is an option that they've been using. And so we have other policy and procedure options available to us. It's what the chief has been using as kind of a template for the, for the, of this article.
And Chief, do you have a sense of how many may be interested in, in, in doing this?
It is hard to say. What's important to know too is that the detail work will go through, you know, all current officers. All union members would be afforded the opportunity to work first and it's only when that list has been exhausted that we'll reach out to retirees. And to the town administrator's point, I do believe that right now we're the only department in Norfolk County who does not have this.
Oh, interesting, okay.
If you mentioned, or maybe Chad's mentioned, policies, they'd be operating per cent policies and procedures. Those would be new policies and procedures, or do we have existing policies that would cover this?
Just so I understand, so yeah, the, in terms of, you know, working into, this was actually worked on in conjunction with the union need board. And so the union, you know, is on board with incorporating this concept into the CBA, so. Policies and procedures, yeah, it would just be, you know, a matter of documenting the order for hiring and just language that says that they're subject to the, you know, performing under the rules and regulations of the Brookline Police Department. The only thing that's different is that we have a lot more leeway in terms of terminating their appointments. They need to be given 14 days' notice if we're, if we're deciding that they're no longer eligible. And we're not, you know, they don't have due process under civil service or anything like that. It's, it's an agreement that we can terminate.
My main question was, what, once you revise the policies and procedures, that's going to come back to the select board as a, what, a general order?
Probably a special order, yeah.
Okay.
Our, our current detail policies are written as special orders.
And so those, those are, the, the, those are, you're notified of those, but those aren't orders that you, that you have to sign off on.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. We have one person in the audience who's indicating she does not want to speak. Charlie, do we have anyone in our Zoom audience who would like to speak?
We have only four attendees. Folks, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the hand raise or Q and A feature at this time and we'll promote you to speak. It seems like no one is interested in speaking, Bernard.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and with that, the meeting.
Well, you have, you have, you did have, someone did request to sign up for public comment, so you have a public comment.
Oh, okay.
Adi has requested to speak and I am promoting them now.
This is public comment, not on the?
Yes, not on this.
Correct, not a public comment.
End of meeting, public comment.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Chief, thanks, Superintendent Amelia.
Adi promoted to a panelist, you may unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Okay, you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, you guys time my time, sorry, Charlie. Adi Genesey, Brookline resident. So in the last two years, we've seen a clear pardon, a clear pattern reoccurring. The town government is biased and has discriminated against residents, against a lot of residents that are coming on public records to speak about this and specifically against the people and organizations of color. And while at the same time we're preaching equality, equity and inclusion, it's a lot of many words without actions. Because what's baffling is the ones that are preaching peace are the same ones seeding divisions, right? What I can clearly see, just plain hypocrisy. And I share some of this hypocrisy, hypocrisy that lies within town governance, which you are. Charlie, can you share that document, please? I believe.
I, I, I have to, I have to apologize. You've asked to share a document that we're concerned might be electioneering. We as town employees can't share things, we can't use public resources to share electioneering documents. So we have to regrettably say that we, if you want to share that with the board directly, you can. But we can't share things that would be conceived, would be, could be considered political advertisements.
None of the stuff I'm sharing has any political.
It makes, respectfully, it makes reference to candidates for election in this election. And so I can't, I can't authorize members of my staff to share that because people would, could construe it as us using community resources to influence an election, which we are not allowed to do. You are, of course, are allowed to read whatever you'd like. You are allowed to send that directly to the board, but I can't authorize sharing that document on the screen.
Okay, I sent it to Charlie, I guess I'll wait to, we have a meeting next week, right?
There's a meeting next week, yes.
Not a problem, I'll set up and I'll address these issues next week then. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, the meeting shall be terminated.
I was raising a opinion, do we want to entertain one more public commenter here?
Okay.
Denell spoke earlier, so I just want to throw that out there.
I'm sorry, who spoke earlier?
It's Denell, he was raising his hand, but he had a chance to speak at the beginning of the meeting, so.
Okay.
Generally, we, we let people have three minutes, so we generally, we, we let, we let people have one public comment.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so with that, we'll end the meeting. Thank you.